You didn't do it at the land, did you?
Mm-hmm.
I thought you were there.
I thought you were there.
I thought you wanted to get rid of the black mask.
Well...
Charter.
Oh.
Black flag.
Is this a charter or a deed thing?
No. Something to talk about. Keep it down there. Share this. We'll see now. What about any disputes? That is a hearing. That tomorrow is all. We good? All right. Way do I miss that thing together. Okay. Let's, uh... Please, uh... Call an order to the Mayland City Council... Oh, I should turn that on. Mayland City Council meeting of June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. And if everyone will please silence their electronic devices. Tonight, we're gonna have Reverend John Bummerbrook provide us an invocation. John?
That's great. Our Father in Heaven, a house divided against itself could not stand. We are allowing our nation to be divided with rich against poor, labor against management, Republican against Democrat, black against white. But we're grateful for the most part, the American citizens, are wise enough to realize that we are being exploited. Father in there, faith stands tall, fear runs away. And so we ask that you give us the courage and conviction that we never allow fear to replace our faith. If that happens, courage we turn the cowardice conviction into compromise, victory into defeat. Instead of shaming the problems we face from our enemies, we will surrender to it. And instead of him to victory, we will be to vanquish. How may we say on our currency and God we trust, may we come naturally, we ask that you guide, guard, and direct this council tonight, that whatever they do or say will be in keeping with your will and the Constitution of the United States of America. Words of Jesus made our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, John. For those of you that are willing and able, please stand with me for the pleasure of witness. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. Okay. It's a council's pleasure, we might consider seeking decision number five up to right now. We've got some folks here in the room that would like to have us address the public art ranking. That's council's pleasure. Would that be okay? Good. All right. In that case, Jay, or Sharon, do you want to... Jay? Go to town, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Council, good evening. It's great to be before you tonight. This process has actually been in process for quite some time, so we're happy to be at the point that we're at tonight. Basically, this is the award and ranking and contract negotiation for the winning arts for the public art program. We were awarded funding from SGL, who are the constructors of the I-4 Ultimate project. So this project is gonna be one hundred percent funded through those funds. There's no city funds can be used towards this project. And what I'm gonna do tonight is just run through real briefly on the process and backgrounds project. And then Mr. Terry Olson is gonna present with me, and we're gonna review with you the award-winning project. And we'd like your approval tonight. We're looking for approval and ranking and to allow the city manager to enter into the contract with the winning artists. So real quickly, just to go through again, this process really began in the two thousand and sixteen and in two thousand and seventeen. There were six jurisdictions that were given funding for this kind of project. Those jurisdictions that all were impacted by the I-4 Ultimate project. Mayland, Ultimate Springs, Indianville, Winter Park, Portland, Orange County were all given these awards. You adopted a public art acquisition policy last year, and for that policy, we put a five-member committee in place, and we're happy to have some of those members here with us tonight. Those five members were Terry Olson from the Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs Office, Liz Doyle, who is here, John Randolph as well, Bob Yowey, who is not here yet, Randall Webster from Meadland Art and History Association, who was not able to appear tonight. But those, I'd like to commend those five. They did put a lot of time into this project, and it was all volunteer, and they're a joy to work with. They really put their heart and souls into this decision. So basically, there was a little bit delay from the initial announcement of the award. In two thousand and nineteen, SGL gave us some clarifying information that we needed to proceed into the actual selection process. So we got that information and went ahead and went forward with the selection. There was a call for artists that was issued in September of two thousand and nineteen, and it went out, and it was publicized in October and November of two thousand and nineteen. We received one hundred and thirty-two entries into our call that went out to the public. Selection committee narrowed it down. They went, uh, down from that one hundred and thirty-two to fifteen top artists. And we met in November of two thousand and nineteen, on the eighteenth specifically, to identify, try to get down to three finalists, based on their prior works. At that point, we were able to get down to three finalists, and those three finalists were required to submit a full proposal to us to describe the concept that they'd like to bring in. A lot of details about the project, so we can vet those out and see which one we wanted to bring forward. So the interviews were conducted once we got those proposals. We did that in early June, and the committee came up with a ranking order of the artist team of Jeffrey Reed and Jennifer Madden were the winning artists with the highest score. Ford and Hugler was our second runner-up, and Mark Allen was in third place amongst our rankings. So again, what we're doing tonight is to get formal approval of the rankings that the committee came up with, and to allow the city manager to enter into contract negotiations with these projects. So what I'm gonna do now is turn it over to Mr. Terry Olson from Orange County, and he's got a review of the project.
Thank you, Jay. Mayor Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here and to have served on this committee, which this is our last official thing, because it's just a hot pool to predict the project and not going on for you. So Reed Madden has experience of doing various public art pieces across the country. Like all of our final artists, we're looking for site-specific art that relates to this place, not some other place, as each of these pieces were. If you can imagine, the concept that they took was of the orange blossom. Orange blossom has five petals, and so they're creating an abstract orange blossom that's seventeen and a half feet tall at its tallest point. And it actually is a bit of a structure that people can go in and sit down. It's both activated at night and during the day. It's created those stainless steel tubes. There's benches inside in each of the petals that one can sit at. There's, in the middle, the stamen are illuminated, which cause a real fun fairy-like texture and feel in the evening. It meets the ADA requirements, and it's engineered to withstand one hundred and fifty-plus mild winds, and it has to be properly permitted. So this is the concept. As you see, it's kind of abstract, so a wind can go through it, but it's made of these tubes, which will be fairly close together. And you can walk into this and sit down at the base of each of these petals. And in the middle is the stamen-like fixture mix. This is at the corner of Fennel and Keller, and from the sidewalk stair, a path will lead right into it. You can't exit out of the way, but there is that main entry into this. So it can be viewed from a distance as you're driving by, seventeen and a half feet tall. You'll be able to see it as you're driving along the roads, even though you'll only see it for a few seconds as you drive by. Or if you're in the park, or it's more residential, comes into that area, and people aren't walking around anymore, they can also walk right in and sit right down. This is the middle piece, the stamen. So it has these rods that are five and a half to seven and a half feet tall. They have a glowing acrylic piece on the top, and in the middle is another perforated ball that glows at night, so lights come throughout that. And you'll see that in this next picture, both the daytime view and the evening view of this piece. And lucky enough, with some people digitally can see what it's like at this time. These people would be socially distanced, but hopefully at some time in the future, this will last for years and years and years. There could be a number of people inside of this structure that's based on the concept of an orange blossom. Yes. The benches are six feet apart, so if it's now, someone could be on each bench. So that's the proposal that we're bringing for your approval tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. More technical, Jay can answer that.
I have any questions with Darren?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. Okay, it's the council's pleasure, we might consider seeking decision number five up to right now. We've got some folks here in the room that would like to have us address the public art ranking. That's council's pleasure, would that be okay? Good. All right, in that case, Jay, you want, or Sharon, do you want to, Jay? Go to town, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, Council, good evening. It's great to be before you tonight. This process has actually been in process for quite some time, so we're happy to be at the point that we're at tonight. Basically, this is the award and ranking and contract negotiation for the winning arts for the public art program. We were awarded funding from SGL, who are the constructors of the I-4 Ultimate project. So this project is going to be 100% funded through those funds, so there's no city funds can be used towards this project. And what I'm going to do tonight is just run through real briefly on the, on some process and backgrounds project, and then Mr. Terry Olson is going to present with me, and we're going to review with you the award-winning project. And we'd like your approval tonight, we're looking for approval and ranking and to allow the city manager to enter into the contract with the winning artists. So real quickly, just to go through again, this process really began in the 2016 and in 2017. There were six jurisdictions that were given funding for this kind of project, those jurisdictions that all were impacted by the I-4 Ultimate project. Mayland Ultimate Springs, Unionville, Winter Park, Portland, Orange County were all given these awards. You adopted a public art acquisition policy last year, and for that policy, we put a five member committee in place, and we're happy to have some of those members here with us tonight. Those five members were Terry Olson from the Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs Office, Liz Doyle, who is here, John Randolph as well, Bob Yowey, who is not here yet, Randall Webster from Mayland Art and History Association, he was not able to appear tonight. But those, I'd like to commend those five, they did put a lot of time into this project, and it was all volunteer, and they're a joy to work with, they really put their heart and souls into this issue. So basically, there was a little bit delay from the initial announcement of the award. In 2019, SGL gave us some clarifying information that we needed to proceed into the actual selection process. So we got that information and went ahead and went forward with the selection. There was a call for artists that was issued in September of 2019, and it went out, it was publicized in October and November of 2019, and we received 132 entries into our call that went out to the public. Selection committee narrowed it down, they went, narrowed it down from that 132 to 15 top artists, and we met in November of 2019, on the 18th specifically, to identify, try to get down to three finalists, based on their private works. At that point, we were able to get down to three finalists, and those three finalists were required to submit a full proposal to us to describe the concept that they'd like to bring in, and a lot of details about the project, so we could vet those out and see which one wanted, we wanted to bring forward. So the interviews were conducted once we got those proposals, and we did that in early June, and the committee came up with a ranking order of the artist team of Jeffrey Reed and Jennifer Madden were the winning artists with the highest score. Ford and Hugler was our second runner-up, and Mark Allen was in third place amongst our rankings. So again, what we're doing tonight is to get formal approval of the rankings that the committee came up with, and to allow the city manager to enter into contract negotiations with these projects. So what I'm going to do now is turn it over to Mr. Terry Olson from Orange County, and he's got a review with you of the project.
Thank you, Jay. Mayor, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here, and to have served on this committee, which this is our last official thing, because it's just a hot pool to predict the project, and not ongoing for you. So Reed Madden has experience of doing various public art pieces across the country. Like all of our final artists, we're looking for site-specific art that relates to this place, not some other place, as each of these pieces were. If you can imagine, the concept that they took was of the orange blossom. Orange blossom has five petals, and so they're creating an abstract orange blossom that's seventeen and a half feet tall at its tallest point, and it actually is a bit of a structure that people can go in and sit down. It's both activated at night and during the day. It's created those stainless steel tubes, there's benches inside in each of the petals that one can sit at, there's in the middle, the stamen are illuminated, which cause a real fun fairy-like texture and feel in the evening. It meets the ADA requirements, and it's engineered to withstand 150-plus mild winds, and it has to be properly permitted. So this is the concept. As you see, it's kind of abstract, so a wind can go through it, but it's made of these tubes, which will be fairly close together, and you can walk into this and sit down at the base of each of these petals, and in the middle is the stamen-like fixture next. This is at the corner of Fennel and Keller, and from the sidewalk stair, a path will lead right into it. You can't exit out of the way, but there is that main entry into this. So it can be viewed from a distance as you're driving by, seventeen and a half feet tall, you'll be able to see it as you're driving along the roads, even though you only see it for a few seconds as you drive by. Or if you're in the park, or is more residential, comes into that area, and people aren't walking around anymore, they can also walk right in and sit right down. This is the middle piece, the stamen, so it has these rods that are five and a half to seven and a half feet tall, they have a glowing acrylic piece on the top, and in the middle is another perforated ball that glows at night, so lights come throughout that, and you'll see that in this next picture, both the daytime view and the evening view of this piece. And lucky enough, with some people digitally can see what it's like at this time, these people would be socially distanced, but hopefully at some time in the future, this will last for years and years and years, there's going to be a number of people inside of this structure that's based on the concept of an orange blossom. Yes, the benches are six feet apart, so if it's now, someone could be on each bench. So that's the proposal that we're bringing for your approval tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or more technical, Jay can answer that.
Any other questions, Sharon?
Just one until probably later. So that, you know, you showed a beautiful glowing ball, and that ball, it'll sit how far up?
It is about seven and a half. Seven and a half feet.
So any worries, any way, you know, it could be vandalized, that's kind of my concern.
Yep, that's a question that we asked them as a committee, and they are familiar with public works, and they felt that this was not going to be a problem. Do you have anything more specific about that, Sharon?
Just that they do that very, have that very thing in mind, that the materials that are being used in this project are going to be easily vandalized. The illuminated candles, if you would, on top of the stamen there, the lights, those are going to be red, and there's obviously going to be a polvo there. So that could be vandalized, someone wants to, someone wants to put enough effort into that, but it's easily made up where we can replace those shit.
That's anyway, next question, if it is, how, how easy is it to replace them?
Yeah, they've had that, they've had that in mind, where they can, new ones can be installed.
Artists sometimes will say things are vandal-proof, but nothing is really vandal-proof.
Yeah, we have ordinances against that. Any further questions or comments? Okay, I think the public might to address this specific agenda item. Now will be the time. Hearing that, we'll bring it back to council, and a motion to be in order.
Oh, sorry, I wanted to discuss something, and see, maybe I should have asked this question, but I wanted to hear the public first. I'm looking at this, and we have palm trees, there's two palm trees. Any thought of doing more of a shade tree than a palm tree in that area? And I can't tell exactly where, you know, the shade come from, because stuff's coming onto that area, or it's on the exterior, yeah.
Those palms are on, like we said, the northwest corner of the intersection of Fennel and Keller, so they are more east, on the eastern side, I'd say, than the western side, so honestly, it's not going to get a lot of shade in the afternoon, you know, after 12:00, so you're not going to get a lot of shade from green trees that were placed there in replacement. And right behind it, there are, I believe it's two badanillas and a large pine tree. So there is decent shade there already when it comes to the afternoon. That's more on the westerly side of where this is going to sit.
All right. Any more questions, thoughts?
No, Mayor, I will move that we approve the public art ranking and contract, and council chair will proceed.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion, second. Any further thoughts, questions? Hearing that, Ms. Maria.
Thank you. Councilman Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilman Nicole Harrison?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Wild?
Aye.
Mary Dahl?
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you, everybody, for all your work, and that this will be distinctive additional to it. Okay. Ms. Maria, let's get to our first public hearing. Do you want to read the title?
The north and south of the city of Mayland, Florida grant support for waste pollution and non-exclusive franchisees to provide, will roll off container collection and dispose of waste within the city of Mayland, Florida. Outlining the franchise duties and provides for terms and conditions under which the franchise will operate, providing severability and provide for an effective date.
All righty, thank you, ma'am, Ms. Sharon.
Yes, and this is another non-exclusive construction and demolition franchise. This Orion Way Services approached the city, they'd like to provide these services to Mayland residents, and this just gives Mayland residents more options for getting quotes and prices when they need to see what they can.
Sounds good. Any questions, comments? I didn't think so. Anybody from the public like to address this particular agenda item? Again, now will be the time. Hearing that, and then bring it back to council, and a motion to be in order.
Here, I'll move the motion.
I like the way you're thinking, Mike. I'll second it again. You really like the way you're thinking. Now, any other comments? If not, Ms. Bray, if you would, please call the rule.
Councilman Nicole Harrison?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Wild?
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie?
Aye.
Mary Dahl?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Bray, you want to read the title of our second agenda item for the second ordinance?
Thank you. The north and south of the city of Mayland, Florida, and that is the Mayland City Code of Ordinances relating to the creation of downtown Mayland, and downtown Mayland Plan Development Zone District regulations, providing for general conditional and prohibited uses within the downtown Mayland Zone and downtown Mayland Plan Development Zone District, providing for development standards within the downtown Mayland Zone and downtown Mayland Plan Development Zone District, providing for certain exemptions and waivers from the downtown Mayland Zone District Development Standards, providing for the signage regulations and standards within the downtown Mayland Zone District, the leading provisions that will become, upon the implementation of the downtown Mayland Zone and downtown Mayland Plan Development Zone District, providing for severability, providing clause, providing for a conflict, and providing for an effective date.
All right, very good. Dan?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, just a real quick, brief update, because we went over this in great detail in the last meeting. So this area is referring to the Main Street portion of the, the Main Street future lane use, so it's only the downtown area. What this update accomplishes is it implements our Conference Development Plan, it provides for pedestrian scale signage, protects the single-family homes in the traditional neighborhood future lane use, and also incorporates architectural and sustainable development standards. The project goals of the overall lane development code were to modernize it, make it more concise and effective and easier to understand, make it a lot more user-friendly. So what you'll see in this portion of the code update is that we kept a lot of the stuff that was in the existing code that was good, we kind of like took a sifter, and the good stuff stayed in, the bad stuff fell out. But this also adds architectural standards, neighborhood compatibility standards, sustainability, and unique parking standards. So again, updating the dimensional standards, a lot more graphics, a lot more pictures, tables, charts telling us what, telling the reader what we want to see, showing you an example, not just a lot of black and white text that they have to interpret. We added in there the neighborhood compatibility, which shows how it's going to transition to protect the single-family neighborhoods, and how it's going to transition in height and density as you get closer to the neighborhoods. It also puts in place the process for the downtown plan development, allowing for that density maximum only through the DICE program, and sets out a concept plan, as well as establishes the PD agreements that are required as part of the plan developments in the DICE. So again, what it also accomplishes is, the existing code was all or none, you either, if you were under 50%, you didn't have to do anything, if you were over 50%, you had to do everything unless you got it waived, this one, actually, under 50%, there's six criteria you have to meet, over 50%, you have to meet all of them, but there's additional new ones that are added, including the standards of the building frontage, the corner building, service areas, sustainability, things like that. So on February 6th, P&amp;Z voted unanimously to forward the ordinance to the council, establishing the DM and DMPP standards with a recommendation of approval, they had 28 comments that were added to it, as well as incorporating 37, all 37 of staff's comments. And on February 19th, DRC unanimously voted to forward the proposed ordinance to the council with a recommendation of approval, with all of P&amp;Z's edits except for two of them, that is the EFS and the metal building prohibition of all metal wall buildings. And a couple weeks ago, June 8th, council unanimously introduced the ordinance and set the public hearing in action date for tonight. So in conclusion, what this does is it provides consistency with our top plan, it furthers the city's vision by implementing a lot of adopted master plans and resolutions and stakeholder interviews to put together this document, it furthers what we want to be by finding how downtown will look through the architectural standards and the building placement standards, while protecting our neighborhoods, controlling the height and density when you get closer to the single-family residents. We believe that Terry's work for thinking provides smart growth and sustainability standards for intergenerations, as well as economic stability and sustainability by providing opportunities and flexibilities to enhance the economic sustainability and volatility of today's market and future markets that may come. And it's definitely a significant improvement of what we have over today, like I said, it's like a sifter, we took out, kept the good stuff and took out the bad stuff and replaced it to close loopholes and reduce barriers which discourage desired projects. So staff is recommending, council is not to propose amendments establishing the DM and the DMPP district, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions?
Yeah, I've got one or two. The first one is, did Harrison do the presentation on that one?
He did not.
I saw how it was clear, we all had kind of a touch on it. You know, you know my feelings about the EFS? Question on the EFS, what a quote for the rules that describe the advanced means by EFS.
So EFS is a, is an external building material that is a lot more flexible, it allows for a little bit more flexibility in the design, you can shape it a lot better, you can, it's got a five-layer protection barrier system to it, so it does allow a lot more flexibility in designing a building at a little bit lower cost, widely used all around downtown, used a lot throughout the city as well. As you can tell, Dan, in favor of it.
Yeah. That qualifies for me, go ahead, man. Yeah, now, you know, and I've, and Dan and I've had probably four or five conversations about it, and I've seen plenty of videos of, and to your credit, I haven't really looked to see big buildings, but for houses and everything, there's a lot of problems with water damage, structural damage, mold. So I guess my question to you is, if, you know, this is allowed, say, this is allowed, can code enforcement do anything about water damage on the properties? Or if one side is creating some mold, is there anything that we can do as a city to say, listen, it's looking a little tarnished over here, it's looking kind of bad, need to improve your policy?
So in, in the commercial buildings, you generally don't find it, in my research, the EFS problems that you referred to tend to be the single-family, and every article I've read and researched on it says that it's, it's related to installers, you know, you have some good installers and some bad installers, so a lot of the problems were a lot of the single-family homes where trap builders would come in and put something up that, that happened, but you generally don't see that in the, in the commercial buildings. Now, is it a code enforcement deal? No, it's not a code enforcement, it's a civil matter if a building leaks, unless it becomes a building code matter where it now becomes inhabitable or it's unsafe for activation if it's in the apartment or, or commercial, then the building code enforcement comes into play.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Just started several. Listen, we got a long way to go.
Yeah, why don't you stretch?
Well, I'll, I'll, the, the, I guess that's a big thing on construction, and it's, it's pretty much advanced, and you get these trap fillers, and they throw up houses and pour that, and they're watered down with paint, put, put the paint on, and it's just, it's just awful construction, and I'm not sure that's comparable to something like this. So, I would say that.
So talking about screwed in funnel here, by putting the care of that.
It's stuck, it's stuck.
It's not going to right.
If you don't put stucco on right, and if you put one coat of water down, paint on it.
Yeah, last of Eric's stuff, got it. Yeah.
Questions, Mike?
I?
This particular issue, I don't think we should spend a ton of time, that's my personal opinion.
Right.
Even if these two issues, I think we should move past them pretty quickly, I don't think they're issues that are, I know that they were a point of contention, and it seems like there were not very many that came out of planning zone leaks that are written.
Right.
So I, I think we should upper down this pretty quickly and move on to other things.
I, I agree.
No, I'm not talking about upper down, I'm talking about upper down the EFS, not a building thing.
All right, very good. Any questions on?
I agree.
Seventy pages of intense reading that I don't know that P&amp;Z ever had a chance to actually do, so.
Well, I'd like to hear, but Vance, I mean Vance is, I've heard a lot of, you've got a lot to say, let's do it, let's. Do we want to do it after the public period? Whatever you want.
Yeah, the public period probably doesn't want to hear it. They go back and forth too much.
Ah, they love here as well, look here, right, Joe? Anyway, okay, maybe. Yeah, there's a lot to share up here. For those of you that have familiarized yourself with this module, is that the correct term, Dan? Of the downtown Mayland District of our newly configured, our newly done, after 49 years of a land development code. Anybody have any, from the public, have any comments? I've got M&amp;Ms, I can be here for a while, so.
Yeah, I don't want to be here for a long while.
At least I'm sorry about M&amp;M's. This back.
Good evening, good to see you, Mayor, Commissioners, or at least portion, portion of you. My name is Becky Milton, 215 North Eole Drive, I apologize, just heard to speak anything. I represent the owners of Peacock Ford, as I mentioned in the last hearing, it was annexed in 2012 with the expectation that it would be a automotive sale and could be rebuilt as automotive sales. It was purchased in 2017 by my client, it had been Don Reed Ford at the time, and we sent over to staff a request really showing two different ways that this can, that what you were considering tonight can be amended to accommodate our request. So when my client purchased the property, automotive new sales were conditional use, which gives you all some control over what that looks like, and automotive repair and service, along with automotive used sales, were accessory uses. All of those uses have been removed completely from the downtown, and I can appreciate some of the reasons that you may want to do that. On the other hand, my client has had, or this property has had that use for probably close to 50 years, and I also suggest that south of the overpass does have a different characteristic than maybe your core of your downtown. And so the previous code that is being amended allowed the uses I described only south of the railroad overpass, and we would like to continue to be allowed those uses. The way it's written now, if my clients, if a hurricane hit us, if it burned down, it's simply, they no longer wanted to be a Ford dealership, but wanted to tear it down and become an alley dealership, they can't do any of that to give these changes. The way I read the code, it's not even allowed as a planned development if they were to read them. So we gave your staff some suggestive language that limits the ability to have these uses to just those properties out of them. I hope you would consider those, and maybe make a motion and direct your staff to include that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to address the council on this specific agenda item? Lots of me here again. Hearing that, we'll fill this public period, bring it back to the council for our myriad of questions and comments.
Yeah, stress. How am I going to go about this?
Well, you know, I'm a line, I'm a page one, line one kind of guy. Now, I know that can take a while, but the, there are high points to this that, again, this is, this is a visionary document, there's no way around seeing it any other way, especially after having that done since 1971. Now, you know, I've finally got the right copy of this, and did a lot more reading Now, you know, I've finally got the right copy of this and did a lot more reading, had a chance to know what Dan and his crew on, on Friday. Yeah. So, and we did not get into a great deal of detail except regarding some of the edge properties, edge areas abutting the protected development. Which goes without saying that we want to protect those properties, those single-family, duplex-related residential properties along the edge. And we have, and while so much of this is great in a contextual way, but we have very specific idiosyncratic parts of Maytown to, to use and apply to, that are not going to change. So I'm, I've got concerns, you know, regarding dice and those things that can be utilized to provide theoretically some incentivized entitlement to get above a forty unit an acre to sixty, seventy unit an acre. And you folks in LA, as you say, give them two meetings and three votes and a couple of meetings, those numbers don't matter at all. But then you give a council and mayor. So if, you know, if the Randolph Development Corporation decided and the council was happy with it, to need a whole lot of five hundred units, five hundred dollar a month apartments in acre, and they needed a hundred units an acre and ten stories with three votes acting out. Those, these are all PDs right there.
Nice.
Yeah.
But you can't get to a hundred units.
Yes.
To the acre, because they'll do a comp plan and then.
And the idea being that.
But you're right, you can do it with, with three votes and time, you can get a comp plan and then it's done.
Yeah. Again, it's going to be to a point, the council's player, at any given point, so I'm not, I'm not sold on whether sustainability, some of these, beginning on page forty-seven, some of the sustainability standards rise to the level of being so important that they would constitute something so valuable to the city of Maytown that it might trigger that, those higher levels of density, if they are height, whatever they may be, to that concern. Again, subject to any given vote, any given time. I have to say, it's a little bit of time. I would, you know, personally, Vance was at the, you know, the February meeting of P and Z where from six-thirty to eleven and four and a half hours, they covered a discussion of seventy pages, very intensely. And while the bulk of that group had one-on-one meetings with community development staff along the way, and collectively as a group had, I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, man, one, four and a half hour meeting go over this. We haven't done this in forty-nine years, guys. And actually, the direction the council had provided to community development to try to have this be able to come forward to council by, you know, early April. Well, those self-imposed time ran, time lines are gone. I'm not sure, and I, if you're wrong, man, correct me if I'm wrong, base here, I'm not sure in the downtown Maytown District could we necessarily have somebody knock, you know, beating the door down for us to consider this. I would still much personally prefer to see this go back to P and Z, to be renewed. And if truly, and I asked Dan this question, you know, in regards to what might change? I don't know. I don't know. But neither does, neither does P and Z until it's had some discussion to work within the synergy group to, to see what that might be.
Let me, let me, the forty seven, the page forty-seven comment, am I right, Dan, unless I misread that, forty-seven has nothing to do with dice, right? Forty-seven is the points you, you're just wanting to, or points?
For the.
The sustainability standard.
The way it's set up is that sustainability, it doesn't give you any bonuses, it says you have to get a minimum of five points to do anything downtown. And two of those points.
Irrespective of that.
Irrespective of dice. Two points come from one category, at least two from another. There's a whole long menu of things you can do to get those points, so it's, the bar was set fairly low, actually, it's not very under the call, it's pretty easy to get a lot of these points, but they wanted to give options and get a different way of getting them, so everybody didn't have to do the same thing.
So, so the only thing on that, I mean, you, you made a couple of points, but that was one I wanted to, to hear and you all talked about a couple times. So the, the sustainability guidelines, the, the concern I have with those points system issue is, we were in, in the Dice program, we kind of wanted to tie things to global issues, not necessarily, hey, does this site checkbox, right? And so what I didn't know is, is there something we can do with that sustainability issue that would allow for points that maybe could be attained globally?
Yeah, you, you're absolutely candid. The, the way that Dice was ultimately adopted, it had those seven criteria, but it also left it open that they could propose additional things outside of the seven criteria. If council puts a lot of importance on sustainability, then they can come up with some sustainability butt proposals.
But I'm talking about your points, so am I right, and, and like I said, I misread any of this, I mean, so I, I look at the points required saying, regardless, if you do a downtown BM project, you got to get five points. And you got to get two, a minimum of two from these two different options, right?
Correct.
Now, some of those are, well, all of them, the way I look at them, they're, they're unique to just that specific project. Is that right? Like do this in your project, and you get points for implementing energy conservation, water conservation.
Leak, flow.
Whatever it is, right? And I didn't know if, because this ties into a conversation we had last meeting about the undergrounding, is, is there a, is there a thing here that we can have where it's a give and take of that project-specific standard and project-specific benefit to community whole project benefit? And can we start to think about this in the way of getting undergrounding done and having a system like this where we could promote the undergrounding of utilities, but yet allow people to go into a point system or, or some mechanism we can use, some other mechanism, where we can use to get things done that are not just on a project-specific basis, that also helps with sustainability? And that, those are the things I was looking at with the sustainability issue, because what I'm trying to avoid is the thought that we got into some of these projects where it was, let me do something to a specific project, and it got a little, hey, we give, and here I get it, you're giving a point here, one and a half for this, reported whatever. But maybe doing something where it's getting points, but you can get points by saying, hey, I'm going to buy a piece of land, a block from here, and I'm going to donate this apartment. Or I'm going to do something that is a more, am I making sense?
Wasn't that originally what we were looking at the first thought?
So that's part of Dice.
Yeah.
But this is, and that's why I, when Dan talked about this, just connected the dots from him a little bit, is that this table, we will not dice.
Right.
Dice is set up on much more.
And this is the, that, oh.
No, no. Yeah, but I get, but so Dice is set up in a much more generic fashion, this is set up in a more specific fashion, that it's specific to each project, frozen positive each, but in light of thinking of things that we may want to happen, whether it be more parks, more, better retention, whatever it is, right? Better water, water quality, as we've all said, that may have a, a better impact than just, hey, over there, they install solar, and it's going to cut their energy bill down, but really have a, a net benefit other than cleaner air, you know, roundabout way unless our energy starts getting generated by solar and wind, anyway.
So, yeah, you're right, these are very project-specific, because it's saying you have to get these points, that Dice is, if you propose these, you could get extra density or things like that, and that Dice is a bigger, bigger picture scale with helping the whole community versus this is a project-specific, you have to get at least five.
So Dice can, the impact of Dice can extend beyond the downtown?
Right now, it's adopted for only the downtown.
Yeah.
So the, so now the benefit of Dice, Mike, what I was saying there is the benefit of Dice is that you can propose a community enhancement that goes beyond just your specific project, where this table is just project-specific, the way I interpret it, is a project-specific.
And I, I, that's, yeah, but the projects that in the M and Z District, they only apply, last year, so the power repurposing of the DMD bank, you know, next week, might be a different thing. Now, that's also dead, my correct, you can't go up with five points somewhere, right?
Yeah, if they.
In theory.
In, in theory, if they, you, you develop there, they're going to have to meet the sustainability standard.
Now, that's nothing to do with new construction as much as a new application, new purposing of buildings, we talked about.
Right, it is new construction. If you're repurposing less than fifty percent, you only have to do six of the criteria. If you're doing over fifty percent, that's when you start taking in a lot more things such as the sustainability and all that stuff, so it, and of course, new construction has that.
And I think that that's gotten, what, what's happened when, when you've done your, and this is by no criticism, this mentions it's how it's, how it's being serviced, and when, when things are put out, when you're doing a summary of this, I think the topics are getting meshed, which is what I think when, when I was trying to clarify the point on the Dice and the sustainability program, when you're doing the thirty thousand foot analysis, it's, it's moving from topic to topic and, and there's, it's harder to, I think what you're trying, there's a lot of detail that I think you all want to get into, and that's why I'm saying, Vance, I mean, if you want to start going through it, I mean, if the problem, issue Dale is that, is there anybody, Dan, I mean, when you talked to P and Z members, did they want to see it back?
None of them said they wanted to see it back when we talked.
Matt, Matt Lamb specifically said he didn't, and that he was happy with.
I spoke with one of them, sitting behind his only commission member, that he wouldn't have to see that.
Well, I mean, Matt, Matt sat there, he said it went good, he had, he had, what, thirty-some odd items, and, and they're all incorporated except the two, he was very satisfied with the process. He came in here and spent, you know, hours sitting there waiting to talk about it, so I, I'm not sure why we're kind of going over this again when, when, within a year, it's all going to be overhauled anyway and incorporated into the entire city. And as it now stands, this is better than what we have now.
So if you settle for better than what we have now, Mike?
Well, if somebody comes in, if, if we get, start digging into this again, it'll be months before it works its way through the process, and meanwhile, somebody comes over here and develops that tract, they develop it under the old plan, which is horrible. So, so let's take better and then work towards best. And, and, you know, while we're going to hold this up and kind of run it through the grist again, when we've already done that, instead of take it and incorporate it in the bigger plan, I just, I just don't see the logic in that.
Dan, how many meetings did P and Z see this document?
It did start with one meeting for four and a half hours, and they all agreed to believe about two hours each.
Like, like I said, we can just go by what they, they pass it unanimously, one member of P and Z showed up, was quite happy with it. So we're, we're trying to say P and Z is not happy with this, and they are, so they don't want to see anything. And I think we need to move this on and then let the staff continue on this momentum and work towards bigger citywide.
So I know about Dale creating that four and a half hour meeting after being plenty of planning zones.
I was just getting warmed up.
Four and a half, yeah.
Right, I just, you know.
So, so, but let me say, Mike, I, I think that there's a, a way we can get through this, and I, I think that, I think Dan and the group have done a great job of this. I think the question is, did planning zoning have an opportunity to come out? The problem I'm having there is that there's not, how many, are there any companies on here?
Yeah, Vance will sit there and.
Understood. So that's why I want to get Dan, I want to get Vance rolling on this, and so he, anything that he's got a problem with, let's, let's address it. And to the extent that there's something that comes out of this, Dale, that we think needs particular attention, I think that we can pass it within the focus to say, we've identified these as issues, within the next however many planning zone meetings, let's tackle these specific items. And I think that there are things that we can do, because I think in the last meeting, we talked about the power around it, just an issue for me, that I'd like to see us as part of this, hopefully. I don't know if Dan, you think that it's best served somewhere else, but maybe having planning zone look at that issue and try to incorporate that into an extract. And are there things that we can talk about tonight, Lindsey, Dale, like that we have that we want to put in it? Or have, that we would like to see then, or see revived, that we can task this? So I think there's, I'm, I'm trying to find a way here where we can move this forward in a unanimous, hopefully, or close to unanimous fashion, but we also address the fact that there might have been things that we want to have, have a closer look at. And that's what I'm, I'm trying to get to a point here where we can, we can work this through, we can put something that's on the books that we can recognize better than what we've got, but then recognize that there's still work to be done. That's where I'm, I'm, I've been thinking about how we get.
So staff, again, staff, staff program, as we move it forward, this is not the last time we're going to see this. When the overall code comes back, we're going to get another shot at the down now.
Understood, but to the trust.
March of twenty-one?
Exactly.
Or May of twenty-one?
So let's, so before we move momentum down on where we are now, and while, while things like this are fresh in our mind, my suggestion is even before May of twenty-twenty-one, certain items that get talked about here that we may want to have focused on, go back to targeted discussions of planning zoning on specific items that may come up out of this meeting, knowing that it is going to be a work in progress potentially, there is a larger code coming, but what can we, what can we tweak tonight as part of this that we can finalize and tweak, whether it be the, the EFS and that stuff, or, and what can we send back with a rec, would we move it forward with the recommendation that planning zoning give us for the comment on this bucket? Because as you said, Dale, it's a big document.
Yeah.
And I think we've got.
How many modules do we expect, Dan?
We got two more major modules.
Two, that's what else they.
We need to, we need to narrow the focus down, I think, than just saying, planning zoning, go back and relook at this, what's the right, DeNova, my right? Okay. So, you know, look at this, let's, let's give them the, let's give them the targeted aspects that we would like to see back, so that this is a better product. And in the interim, obviously, you're going to be working on, on a better product. So that's what my, and so Vance, I mean, if you've got them, I'd love to hear what, what this is.
Yeah, I thought, you know, usually how we do it is we go page by page, so that's kind of what I was just waiting for and missing.
I really don't want to go page.
I mean, if you don't have anything on page seven, then there's no problem. I mean, you just go through, you go page three, you got a problem, we're talking about it.
And that's just actually the way that it was handled at that P and Z meeting.
Right.
So why don't we, before we get excited about how many, let's go, let's, let's just hit a couple, let's see how, how important we get with it, and how much energy we all have. I think maybe, I don't know if there's as many as we, as we, if there are, but let's, let's at least try a couple and see what we got. That's my suggestion.
I'll start. Lindsey's never had the beauty of serving on P and Z, I forget if we, we have, but P and Z.
I've taken plenty of breaks, didn't want to talk about it. I, I think we can get through this faster now. Vance, what do you got?
Okay, let's get to go through it. The first one was on page two, I was kind of talking to Dan about down at the bottom, right below the shaded area, community development director shall determine whether, you know, unless the use is part of the existing, existing use. existing use category. Um, I didn't know if that's, you know, being new into this. Um, talking to Dan on Friday also, I think it was Friday, right?
Thursday.
That Dan said this is, um, typical and most land development codes, is that right, Dan?
Every land available, kind of ever picked up at that.
Yeah, okay. So I didn't know if any, I wanna make sure nobody else had a problem with that.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I did. Okay, I do know that. Now, though, we had percentages that have been discretionary to a community development director, right?
So this, this is, what this is saying is a little bit different from their percentage thing.
Oh, I know it's different, right?
Yeah, this is saying that somebody applies for, we, we allow chicken, chicken, backyard chickens.
Right.
If someone comes in and says, I wanna do backyard quails, the director have the authority to say, well, with quail and chicken, we've just found the same thing, there's no, there's no different impact, there's no noise, there's no more anything else, unless you're peeking over the wall and you know the difference of the birds, the same exact impact. So rather than going through and doing amendment to ordinance, and now that quail, backyard quails is a permitted use, this would give the director authority to say, the uses are very similar, it's the same impact, yes, it's the same thing.
And I would raise the topic, um, with Vance, my actual raise the topic. Says nothing to do with you, the next community development director may not be as smart and insightful as starting you on.
Hopefully lots smarter.
What, what would be the alternative?
I don't know.
I don't know.
So, is this, is that your, is that is in every code?
Yeah, because no code can.
That's, that's opinion, Mike, and this would give that much discretion to us, they should go to developer.
So I, what I can say on this is, I think what Dan was gonna say, or what the issue is, is that you can never know that you've covered every single use item in the sun, right? So you can never know whether you've not enumerated every single use. So if you don't have this, then you either, your choice is either have it come back up for a vote by city council or make it.
Or actually go back.
Part of it, it would, essentially, it wouldn't even become a conditional use because you'd have to list it as a possible conditional use. So you're trying to limit what would have to go back if it was within some reasonable discretion. I, I guess, like I said, what's the alternative? If we don't have this, what's the alternative?
Actually, I have a question about that. If we, if, let's use your quail example, which is excellent. You, you, someone comes to you and says, hey, I got quail instead of chickens, and you say that's fine, and then you quit. And then we now have a new direct director, and they say, no, quail are not the same thing as chickens. So how, how would that work in operation?
So the way it works is that if a determination is made by the director, it's codified in a administrative interpretation section in our, in our files.
Okay.
And so that sets the precedent for future.
Okay.
I hear your concern, I just don't think there are better alternatives. Because I'm willing to move on because I think it's, without it, you, you've got potentially an ability for a project to move.
Or move more slowly, so.
Or move more slowly. And I get the fact that, could you have something that uses the discretion, but then, I know for a long day, I was looking at the city, you're not gonna let the community development try to get away with it, so. Don't, you, there's gonna be enough attention to the D and Z, I think.
So I actually.
Dale, I wanna like.
Exactly, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
No, no, the comments. Don't, 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 just don't, don't interpret that.
Michael, Michael, classically.
Yeah, now, I'm looking forward to the continued comments.
All right, go ahead, Vance.
Okay. So I think, you know, I also talked to Dan about on page four, interior or exterior with the sound. And that should be not a permitted, but a conditional use, so, that we're, wanna.
So.
Yeah. Page four, eating, drinking, entertainment.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then, um, y'all just jump in if you're like, I wanna say something about the uses. Then on five, um, I was looking at, I guess I had some questions about the, uh, big box stores over ten thousand square feet. And when you go up to fifty thousand square feet.
Well, we won't see many of those in the downtown, maybe.
No, that's true.
I have a question on page five, what is shopping center? Uh, you should ask.
A shopping center is defined as a mixture of uses within one connected building where you have different use types. Then, in some port, some licenses, they're required an anchor and some they don't. In our, in our current code, it doesn't require an anchor. It's a mixture of different uses where there's different entrances for each of the uses. And it's, it's all, it shares a common parking, it shares a common landscape and things like that.
So strip mall would fit into that, haven't you?
Like, the strip mall to be a shopping center, uh, yeah.
Well, we just get on E and Z, under our existing code. Is that fairly characterized, Dan?
Yes.
All right. Anything else jump out at you on, uh?
The use.
Uses, uh, you know, I was a little confused by, uh, on, again, page four, halfway down, restaurants, takeout, or delivery only. No seating provided, uh, as both a conditional use within the downtown mixed district, but an allowed use with PD. Clear?
Correct.
Oh, clear on how that actually, actually works. Okay.
Does outdoor seating count as no seating?
Uh, no, if you have seating, that, if you're providing seating, then it would. These are the things like the, uh, little secret piece or something like that, where you're, or the takeout type thing, where you're just picking up a prepared meal and you're taking it out, or it's being delivered to you, there's no dining, there's no, doesn't mean you can't get it and then go out to the park and eat at the park, but it's, the restaurant itself is not providing that.
What's that?
Uh, I, I have to add on, um, six, under the downtown, maybe the principal use, no ground floor on the mixed use. We're, we're good with that, right, Dan? What did we talk about on that?
That's saying that a mixed use building cannot, it's gotta have commercial on the block before it can, we can't have ground floor residential.
Okay, and, and, and I had talked, and I'm sorry, I can't recall, and I had talked about maybe, should that have been a conditional use or uh, it's allowed under the PD or.
You have to ask the PD.
Okay, so it's gonna have to be negotiated, such as we did with, uh, us now apartment. That was a negotiated ground floor residential use that we were all very proud to vote in.
Well, they got a condition.
That's what we're making a use.
Yeah, they got a condition we used to allow it, yeah, yeah, yeah. They checked out all the boxes and had all the.
In theory.
Had all the, uh, substantial evidence to prove, yeah.
Uh, Vance, go ahead, Vance.
Um, seven, D, uh, number one, I just wondered, and Mike, you could probably talk about this a little better. It is, you know, do we wanna have electric scooters and micro mobility?
Well, I'm kinda worried about this, yeah, this, this electric scooters, those things look like duck machines and, you know, you wanna ride up, you know, seventeen ninety-two in our Ford. You know, I mean, with the bikes and all the other stuff. But in, in, um, D one, that's allowable to be electric scooters. Everybody good with that?
We're all over the place.
I know.
That's America, so.
Except where they're taking them out.
Yeah, some, some cities are taking them out.
I, I, I think we wait till they can, probably.
I think those cities did that and took them out.
I think Orlando's has, um.
Uh, or I ended with, I, I thought they were getting away from. Send them up to, like, Alexandria and stuff. Smaller towns that have little.
I think we need a more small streets, not seventeen ninety-two.
I think we can fix that through a licensure standards point of the business rather than the zoning code as per as mine, do you think?
Yeah.
Uh, anybody have any issues with some of the, uh, specific measurements and ratios on, uh, page ten? Over clear on how that works?
I mean, the DN edge, I think, I think you're right, Dale. I think there's, there's something to be said, we wanna focus on that. I think that that would be one thing, I think we were gonna look back on this on a closer detail is, is that the protection of that edge, I mean, Dan, we talked a little bit about this, I mean, that, I mean, that there is, um, making sure that we've created, you know, appropriate setbacks. I mean, if this is the, if this is it, but I mean, I think that, that Dale, I think one of the points of, of going back is saying have a focus group about the DN edge.
So there's, there's also a section a little bit further, pages down the right, about the neighborhood compatibility standards. And that is in the edge, that's where you get into lighting, parking, things like that, that really make it not only transition down in high density, but kind of a quiet, more neighborhood compatibility when you get over there. So the lighting changes, the parking lot location, the building orientation, that all is in place to protect the residents.
Agreed, and putting that in real life terms, we're talking about transecting height down to, are we talking about three stories next to, you know, uh, you know, uh, residential, single family residential stuff? Because the single family residential stuff can be two stories tall.
So, so like use bridgeway?
Yeah, bridgeway, that's a good example. Uh, where we're trying to be using form-based code, trying to make this stuff transition down to softer edges and, uh, less impact. Uh, I think that's a terrific concept that we've been talking about with P and Z for the last fifteen years. So, uh, but now we're actually doing something about it. And lighting and sound, you know, sound and lighting that stays in its own space. And, uh, not unreasonable. Talk about floor area ratios here that, uh, you know, would be comfortable with. Because Becky Wilson and other, you know, development applicants will be wearing that out. That's their job. And bless her heart, you're good at it. And that's some of my, honestly, biggest concern is how much, whatever unintended consequences it may come from, interpretations of what we've got here that we have to accept and discuss.
Let me ask this, Dan, in the DN edge, when you say rear, rear, rear yard setback.
Yeah.
Is an NA. The thought on that is.
So you're gonna have a building envelope, and in the envelope, once you get to the, that, you get to that setback, then you can start putting the structure of the buildings. But the way the neighborhood compatibility standards have it is that you have to push all the buildings up to the front away from the residents. The things that are allowed as back for the parking, the service areas, so things like that that are not, your buildings. And let me get back to this one.
So you could put under this, under this analysis, there's no rear setback, you could put that stuff a foot off the line in the DN edge?
In, in, yes, in the DN edge, but in the neighborhood compatibility standards, like up here on the screen, you're, you're gonna, in the first hundred feet, you're not, you're gonna be the same height as the height allowed in the residence. But you're gonna have the building as far away from the residents as possible because you're, the way the neighborhood compatibility standards read is that the things at the back are gonna be your parking and your area, your open space, and things that are not building oriented. So you're not gonna have the building height in the first hundred feet more than, more than the same height as the hospital.
So the struggle that that is for me is that we heard a lot of complaints about, well, not complaints, but suggestions on the project.
The car lights.
Yeah, they say, actually put the building, give me something that actually buffered me from the lights and the parking. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that, I, I'm completely up for the, the head, and I think, we talked about this with the way back, I think I was suggesting originally when we said they just gave a hundred feet off of some of these areas that were close to it. But I don't know that that gets us to what we really want all the way if they can push parking and lights and what would sometimes be maybe more disruptive than a three-story building.
Yeah.
On the property line.
Well, that's talking about putting the dumpsters behind it too, right?
Dumsters.
The dumpster's gonna be backing up on a property line, residential property lot?
And that's a lot of what Dan and I and group talked about on Friday, specifically going through the entire downtown, maybe the district, and just the edges, because there are idiosyncrasies of every given edge or every side. These are all things that are real. We did a parking lot, if we were late enough, there was no reason. So, uh, that's a parking lot, again, it's not very tall.
You're gonna have quite an environment issue.
Yeah, and the, the, uh, question even about how tall the fences slash walls could be is interesting. Says, uh, I mean, in my house, I could have eight foot fences and walls. But we're being limited to six here, if I got that straight, Dan?
Yeah.
So, and actually, the, in the neighborhood compatibility standards, it talks about off-street parking, the parking lot being in the back, building setback a minimum of fifty feet from a lot line to protect the development. Building orientation being away from the residents, building massing, tapering down as you get closer with different distinct modules such as storefronts, wings, and things like that that are residential scale and character. And of course, the height we talked about, the building materials.
So, so, Dan, I think, I think my issue is, especially on, when it went south there, when we talked about the DN edge district, if it goes out, I'm not so sure that what you wouldn't wanna have is the actual building closer to the property line with a somewhat of setback that actually provided some screening. I don't know that we wanna mandate, it, it, this is a hard thing, I get what you're, I get the purpose of what the code's trying to do, and I agree with it in principle. I just don't, I'm not sure that we wanna forbid the building potentially going within, closer to the line, to then not have the dumpsters, driveways, streetlights, which a house, a three-story condo, something like that, may actually provide the buffer that we're seeking better than the law.
Then, then where would the, the parking and the dumpsters and?
It would go on the front.
Well, I, I, it's on our old dollar here, we got parking lots and that stuff.
So you're, so, and I, I look at the DN edge districts as being the backside of potential multi parcel assembly. I mean, the way this really comes into play, where we'd be really sort of worried about this, is that somebody bought the front edge on seventeen ninety-two and then also bought it all the way on the back.
Yeah, in Baguio.
And into what is the traditional single family residential areas, right? And so to protect the neighbors from that project that could be six stories, becoming six stories next to what is traditional neighborhood, we step it down.
Right.
And what I'm trying to think of, so you have the retail on the front, well, the, great, let's have the retail front seventeen ninety-two. But we, we would potentially wanna have, I mean, a resident might say, no, give me a, give me a building on my property line that helps break up the noise or whatever. Now, there may be a situation where they said, y'all are crazy, I can't believe you allowed a three-story building content feature to the property line. I just don't know that we wanna force, by doing this, we're saying, for sure.
So, so you wanna give them the, the option of maybe they won't.
I think, I think there's a way we can potentially do this where more wording and, and potentially saying that what the purpose is is create the step-down effect, that I think there's a setback that we should. And you often see, when, when you do a PD, you'll often see that the PD mandates setbacks, it mandates certain screening. We did it up here on Main Avenue, Main Boulevard, I'm sorry, where it was opaqueness of the shrub. I mean, you can get real specific, right? You could say, you gotta, you gotta plant X amount of trees, so many feet on center bill. So there are different ways you can create the buffer. I'm just trying to think here is that can we have words that say what the intent is? Which I think the intent is to create a buffer between the single family residential and what is a much more dense project? How can you create that buffer appropriately? And I, I think the DN edge is a great way to do it, I just think we maybe need to tweak the wording on how we do it so that we're not necessarily creating unintended consequence where.
So that give the council more flexibility when the Congress comes to dictate that?
I think it's a staff, I think it's a staff-first negotiation.
Right.
That's a TRG issue as we currently have the structure. There is no more dramatic example than contemporary cars. They're getting closer.
Currently, if you're, if you're building. Currently, if you're, if you're building, you can go, currently there's, we don't have much in a way of a search engine step-down, do we?
Well, uh, Dan, I don't know that we actually have form-based code codified.
Right, right now, if you wanted to build up to a residential area, we can.
With, you can, currently, you can go to the maximum length, there's no, no doubt.
There's a, well, there's a hundred foot, what's a hundred feet? We have a hundred foot.
Alright.
Let, let's just blow it out under the, under the current. Well, Dan, I mean, I'm right, under the, under the way we did.
Where did the complaint?
Where we did the complaint to get, we did something, I know we did something up by Versailles, right?
Yeah, the complaint said that the area around Versailles and the area around, uh, Denzyon is two hundred feet, but, but with the, and aggressive is a hundred feet, but what the complaint said is that the city shall protect this by incorporating standards in the land development code to protect it. So this is the standards that.
So, so the, the footprint is there, we just, we're failing in the footprint, right? We're, we're trying, and that's what I'm, I'm trying to get the verbiage right. And, and I think this is something that, is there something we can do tonight? But then this is an area I think in concept needs, that we can potentially work on.
So, so is, is your thought we yank this out?
No, no.
Or we include it, but then tell them to go back and fine tune it?
I'm, I'm saying that, there, there's a couple of things. One is the, there's no rear yard setback in either the DM or the DM edge. Uh, I think that potentially, in Dan, your thoughts, is that on the DM edge, the rear and potentially even the side, because looking from the side yard, some is actually a rear yard.
Yeah. Have two front yards.
Right, so I think there's something, and we can potentially write this, is that when, and Dan, I'm just thinking here, when, when the, when the rear or the side yard abuts, give me a zone district, RSY.
Or, or.
Or, you know, this or that, that's lower density development, there would be a minimum setback of X with adequate screening and buffering to provide. Yeah, to provide screening and, uh, I use that, I think that's my definite word, my definition, but to, to provide for adequate buffering, so that the, the density and the scale of project transitions. I, I think there could be something like that, verbiage-wise, that would get you to the same place.
I mean, so what Bill said, I mean, these lawyers coming in here, they're gonna read our code and they're gonna share the department the best they can. So the, the, you know, the stronger we can make the code, the better for the residents.
And that's why we spent a good bit of time Friday morning, literally going around the perimeter of the downtown Mainland District. And it's different, different, different places, Circle Drive's a different animal, that's contemporary.
Greenwood Gardens.
Yeah, different animal, you know, railroad tracks provide some things that, it's just, uh.
Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan, or Mike.
What, what's your thought to, to put this wording in now and ask this?
So, so my thought is, yeah, my thought is to come up with some wording or ask staff to work with Cliff to come up with some wording, to drop a note in here for how we can do this to, to promote the effect of what we're trying to do here with the DM edge.
So you want, you want a bigger setback?
I'm saying, I'm saying that by words, we should promote the concept that in the DM edge, as you transition into residential, let's provide for the, the need for setbacks and creation of buffers between the DM edge and the adjacent residential.
Protected development. So when we get to page fifty, the neighborhood compatibility standards, you'll see that there is a fifty-foot setback from the protected development. And it talks about the vegetation, the type of walls, and things like that that transitioned out. So that we do have a, a setback now from protected development.
So that's fifty foot from the building?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, setbacks are great, I'm talking about the buffers that would be created by, I don't, I get that there would be a building, but we're, we're afraid of the lights, the cars, the traffic, the roads, the other things that, that you don't necessarily want pushed, pushed to the edge of the property line because you're dealing with a fifty-foot setback. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so when we get to the neighborhood compatibility, we can come up with some language that, that you feel will strengthen that. I don't see a lot of it's in there, but well, I understand there's more to it.
More, more to get a noted, uh, three A on page fifty-one in that regard, regarding six-foot tall fences and walls.
But we were, yeah, so the problem was we were, remember, we, we had this fight where it was like, hey, I don't want the, I don't want the wall. But I was on, um.
Well, yeah, so Barry had something up there on, uh.
That was Summit, that was also Summit.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Some on the walls, some on the fence, some on the shrubs, I mean, it's hard to come up with something that's useful. But like I said, I think we can promote the verbiage to get you where you go.
Throw the wall.
Kill the wall, take down that wall.
I know your next comment is gonna be on like page thirty-five.
We're gonna go quicker than two pages at a time.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna go high picture, you're gonna go big picture for it.
Well, one of the things I did wanna talk about, and I talked to Dan about this, and this is really my, you know, what I'm really big on, you know, trees and shrubbery and stuff, is on page sixteen, uh, last June, Dan and I had chatted about doing a tree pallet and plant pallet for the city. And, uh, my discussion on Friday was what happened with the tree pallet, because if you could, I don't know how many of you all did, but I went to the Florida Yards Don Worthing Plants, and you have a choice of, of this website, a choice of one hundred and fifteen different trees, uh, seventy-five different bushes, twenty-five different ivy. So a lot of it, I mean, it's, it's probably a good quality tree, but does it buy shade? Does it, does it look attractive? Does it crack the sidewalk? You know, those are the things that we really need to look at when we're putting a tree pallet together, what's best for the zones to use in. So, but in the discussion with Dan, the one thing that we had talked about is that they're working on that right now, right?
Correct.
And we will do a tree pallet.
And Bill was around, you know, Randolph and John were around, when we were deciding what three palms equals one oak? I forget exactly, you know, equivalencies, uh, choices for replacement trees. And, uh, so, I mean, these two know all this stuff. I got your numbers.
Yeah, Mike's right, I don't have anything for a while, so. Yeah, I saw the light holding, and I had a discussion about that due to tourism, because I know there's some of the over on Mainland Concourse North, those are molded plastic and another big panel mold.
Can I ask a real quick question? Has bothered me from the first day, what, that would be nineteen ninety-three? Uh, our sidewalk standards with Iron Man highlights and other things that from those days, eighteen eighty, eighteen. This has annoyed me personally for forty-five years. Uh, we seem to want to do that, to put those, now, I don't know if they necessarily need to be by Iron Man, you know, our center-related stuff. Could they be our logo? Could they be whatever, you know, that brands us? I don't know. Just annoyance of mind. Okay, incorporate specialty papers. Okay, there's some technical questions. Let's get sure you're learning stuff about, uh, what, the terms for, or something to say?
Oh, yeah, this is the application.
You have trouble sleeping, you just outran it? The, uh, outdoor dining on page twenty-three. Uh, you know, these all sound very clinically, you know, correct. Now, how do we actually adapt them to our city? You know, whether, uh, you know, outdoor seating is around about thirty-six inch freestanding removable barrier. Again, details things that, uh, uh, moving on to page twenty-five, side access and circulation, shared access and circulation systems, uh, which we would love to have, cross-access and things that we tried to advocate over the years. And we've just thrown another curb cut, where we're wanting to minimize these things, and we just thrown another curb cut on Doyle.
Now, that is a very big curb cut, but I don't.
I disagree.
Dan? The thirty-six, the thirty-six foot wall, though, I think that's only if it's required, right? Yeah, that's only if it's required by law.
It's only required if the state licenses, so that it's a happy amount of license.
And that's move, remove?
If it's required, yeah, right.
If it's required by the T R P license.
Yeah. Okay, uh.
So they're gonna take this one's, the next one's thirty-seven, so.
Yeah.
Going down anything?
We've still got them all the way through here. So Doyle is, uh, that, uh, shall be limited to no more than one every hundred and twenty-five feet, except for less than your, your Doyle place. Where are you? I'm at the top of twenty-six on E. So again, we say things that make, we write things that make sense, except that they apply to us. And so I, these things challenge me. Let's see, uh. I'm skipping things that would avoid district titles, but I'll get to something.
Well, I, I, I think Mike, you know, in bringing up his edge and coming up with language, I think that's a good substance there's saying. Everything else, I think we're just kinda fishing around on, and I don't, I don't see any meat there that, that really warrants holding this up.
I think meat's gonna come on page thirty-seven.
I'm ready.
What is it?
Yeah, I'm ready. Give it to us. It's the metal, you know, I think, um, prohibited metal that we can use for some architectural accent, um, on a building would be great. Uh, I mean, we're not looking at, you know, ten roof or something to that. I mean, we can do some verbiage where we say, you know, accent only or signage, come up with something to be used. If we, if we think of anything, Dan?
It was interesting to me because the, the old sculpture we just awarded was very metal-y, so it's kinda, it's sort of teed you up, Dan, so.
What, what I would recommend, because if you just use the word metal, there's a long, big gamut of really cool modern metal and really just.
That's a solid, it's a solid thing.
So what I, what I think we ought to do is similar to we do, to what we do in B nine with the tile, is just say metal or steel is prohibited except for architectural accents. Kinda like we do with B nine tile is prohibited except for architectural accents.
That satisfy you, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. I'm personally okay with ECOS in the sense that I've seen it done okay. Personally, I've actually, and there are some, there are environmental risks, actually, it's, they, I've seen it used as a insulating factor that actually is, improves insulation of building height, so I don't.
Over regular stuff, I don't say.
Over, over certain building materials, so I, I don't know that I have a huge problem with it, but, so I think, so.
Insulation.
It's a, it's a, it's a contractor issue, right?
Do you have a certain feeling at all?
On ECOS?
Yeah.
I did some reading, and I was looking for, you know, from, from a construction defect standpoint, and I, I found the same kinda thing about residential, but on the larger commercial projects, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with what Dan's been saying. I didn't see a lot of large-scale.
Screw-ups.
Right. So I, 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 I agree, I think there should be some way that we can, we can force remedial measures if the property starts to get to a point of, like, something presents itself, but.
Cause I, I, I walked, I was walking past a couple of months ago, the Parker or, you know, one of those two down in the area. They were already fixing, when you come in, they were already fixing stuff on it, so. Yeah, you know.
But if they're fixing it, it's okay, right?
Then that's fine. Right.
Right, unless they let it go.
They let it go. Alright, so, so again, you're making the point that the weakness would shake out is that you would put in metal with architectural, except for architectural accent, right?
Yeah, metal, metal and steel would be prohibited, we take out the word walls, and we just say metal and, metal slash steel is a prohibited materials except for architectural accent.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, change the topic slightly, and I don't mean to step back, but rear service door is something we've all driven past a thousand times, uh, with, uh, whether it's, uh, your Starbucks, with the rear service doors facing Seventy Ninety Two. We're still requiring those, Dan?
Are you on a specific page?
Yes, I'm on twenty, uh, thirty-three, E, twelve E. Now, because we're gonna have a spot or could theoretically, for example, with, uh, B D and T, that, uh, there may not be a spot for rear service doors. There may be a main entrance with one, two, three doors alongside. So again, I'm getting back to the idiosyncrasies of who we are, where we are, what we are. Is that something that we wanna hear?
Yes, I would hear. All, all you're saying is that a secondary access may be provided.
That's narrow, not shallow.
I view that as this over here, I mean, I view that where I walk through to the back of Starbucks is also a second, I mean, but maybe I'm.
Well, but it does from Starbucks, let's say the laundry place or.
Understood, right, it's hard to.
And that's what we will see.
Secondary, though, I think it's a, a concept, man.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think so, I think you're gonna see the outpost has a secondary access that's not off the main street as well. So it's, it doesn't require it, it just says that they may provide it.
Ben, your next point is gonna start with five, I feel.
He stopped them.
A real quick, thirty-eight, one, wire laminated, three hundred and twenty-pound, thirty-year architectural grade shingles, not prohibited.
But this, but this was, we're talking about B one.
Thirty-eight, B one, nineteen, B one. Is it prohibited roof dikes?
So you want it?
No, I just wanna know why it's specifically okay, that's not prohibited.
This, this came out of our consultants' recommendations for best practices.
So we don't know why.
Well, I, it, it's best practices around the nation.
Right. So I read that it is prohibited, that, no?
No.
Except, so, except, so you're, you're.
Why is that?
Oh, because I think, I think they need a certain standard, I, I thought that's what they, much higher quality.
Yeah.
And durability.
And, and we had talked, where do we come, where, where do we end up with? I mentioned on thirty-nine, C one, um, we were kinda being contradictory to page forty-eight, where it said that, um, the only signs will be allowed in the DM districts are freestanding monument signs, but then we had the window signs that are allowed, twenty-five percent of window. Were we contradicting ourselves on that? Where do we come up with?
No, that, C one allows window signs.
So our freestanding monument wall, is that what you're meaning by wa, no, a frame building?
Including window.
But didn't we say somewhere that we weren't allowing window?
No, we, we currently don't allow window signs in downtown. This is going to allow up to twenty-five percent of the windows.
Okay.
Maybe that's where. And these are not lettering on window glass, but signs in the front window.
Any colors and colors of the air.
Alright, but it would be like, um, neon sign, not a paper sign, or a paper sign?
Sign is a sign.
Sign is a sign. Okay, gotcha.
Now, uh, the eight-foot monument, maximum height on both, uh, you know, uh, residential uses and, uh, grocery uses, and APs composed of two-foot base or six-foot, uh, sign facing, or sign or copy size. That's how you get to the AP.
Yeah, a lot of the sign language is coming from the existing sign product separate, the addition of the A-frame signs, the window signs, the rest of it. The rest of it was, until we do the comprehensive sign code update, the rest of it was carried forward.
Well, and that's on our agenda also.
Yeah. I'm excited to hear the first time.
Having said we sound code the first time.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I did have, there was a forty-five where I was worried about retention, but we talked about that. I, I said we should be able to withstand a hundred-year storm event, but I think in our conversation, Dan says, what's up with Saint John Water and Amendment approval product? And they'll have to go through them.
Real quick, on forty-four F, and please, uh, correct me, cause my uncle had, says no exotic invasive plants? Does that mean just, is, is exotic invasive banned plants something special, or is just invasive plant?
You don't, you want, you don't want invasive plants at all?
Oh, I know, so we're only saying no to exotic invasive plants? Is that where they're from, uh, like Thailand or something, or?
Yeah, they're for the forests, so.
Of forests.
A, a Ford plant that is going to take over the landscape.
Do you want it further?
Well, you're just saying, we have to put exotic.
We can, we can put four in there, that's fine.
Four?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it, yeah.
Okay. Uh. Still fifty-something coming. Let me just say.
No, well, this is.
I, I got my comment on forty, uh, seven, so this would be, I would say on Dan, forty-seven. So forty-six into forty-seven, I do think we should ask planning zone to look at whether or not sustainability can be looked at in the same way of DICE and not necessarily on a project-by-project basis, that would be mine, often. I get the concept. But I think you should be awarded points potentially for something you do that promotes sustainability, our concepts of what we're doing, but on a bigger picture, not just for the benefit of the project. That's just, I, I mean, I'm a.
Does that make sense, Dan?
So, so adding consistent, adding sustainability measures for regional projects?
So, so I.
Community benefit.
I think there's something, I, I think one of the thoughts here is that we got kind of tripped up when people were saying, I'm gonna get, to get to a bonus, I'm gonna do these project-related items, right?
Correct.
And I get that this is somewhat different, but I think what I'm trying to say, is there, is there a way we could get points, or you could get, you could check these boxes by saying, I'm gonna participate in, or I'm going to build a park, or I'm gonna put in, uh, I'm gonna fund the creation of a mobility, whether it be bike lanes or.
Or solar panels to light the street.
Some, something, I think that there's something here, because I think, I'm not, I don't know, I, I get that it's good for environmental standpoints just to have an energy-efficient, you know, they put in some energy-efficient product, or some energy, an energy-efficient design. But I think we should get, I think we should award or promote a greener, more sustainable community, which I think you can get by not just a project specifically.
Isn't it, we kind of want both, though, I mean?
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
So, like, I think we still want this to say, have a sustainable building, but won't the DICE allow for someone to say, I want a good community share?
Would allow for the bigger ones, this is gonna be required no matter what, DICE or no DICE.
You don't get forty-eight points, you're not getting additional density or anything.
No, no, so what I'm saying, I, I get you now, I'm with you, but what I'm saying is to get a point, we should award a point if you do something that has got a larger community, I think we should.
From direct beneficial to the building.
I, I think we should promote the potential for the building to contribute to an overall plan that creates sustainability throughout the community. That's what I think.
So what, in your example?
Uh-huh.
Uh, we assign point value to buying parkland somewhere.
Yeah.
Or buying right away across the block.
But it doesn't give them any bonuses or any, or any additional density or anything, correct?
Correct, it just gives them a point in the, in the.
You, you're requiring to get five points.
Correct.
I'm saying that you can get up to two and a half of those points by doing something that benefits just an off-site project that also checks, that also meets the general goal of the sustainability of the activity. For example, instead of having, let's say that we decide that, um, electric vehicle charging is, is something that we want to create, right? But instead of having, you give points for one and a half for a level three charging, and for a level three charging, right? So instead of that, that project, putting one or two level three charging stations there, they are able to combine with two or three other projects and create a true level three charging area where there's ten spaces, but they're off-site. And they create the benefit of having that in one central location instead of having each specific project have a. Because there's something to be said for these, having one, and actually, in some locations, they become a hub for activity and actually businesses actually want to be around these charging stations, because people go there, wait thirty minutes, they get coffee, they hang out, they do whatever, it actually promotes economic activity around the stations. So it doesn't necessarily have to be tied to one per one building. So that, that's what I'm saying, I think there's a benefit to saying that they can get these things, or they can check the box by promoting them off-site.
That makes sense. We can definitely look at things that add, what I don't want to happen is council get excited that that's gonna happen, because if I'm doing a building and I could add low-flow toilets in my building, get the same amount of points as if I have to go buy land somewhere and create a park set for a community garden or something like that, chances are, they're gonna do what they need to do on their building, because it's a lot easier, they're building it a lot of times anyway in the building, to get their energy star ratings. We would have to make it to where the point, and that's where they could do it through the DICE and get density out of it, and it's, it's really gotta be a decent incentive for them to go out and spend extra money offsite, buy something, rewire something offsite, or.
No, but if they're gonna, if they're trying to shoot for points, and I get you, but if they're shooting for points, let's give them an opportunity to go through something that's not just several on site.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that, we can, we can expand these and, and we can take it back to the sustainability committee, committee and run by them and see if they have any.
I think that's, you, you actually made my point, which is that why do I want to reward a guy or make a point? I get what we're trying to say here, is get a point by putting low-flow toilets, wow, great, but let's, let's get them off.
We're gonna do that, yeah. Yeah, but a good, a good point is, and something that maybe raises sustainability is, over mine, first thing else?
Yeah.
That we have, um, a pump, and then that pumps the water up, and it's a water feature, and you have a little pond here, little pond, little front and down, little front and down, and it's, and it's vegetated. So, the water from the lake's being pumped up, and you go to this pond, pond, and the plants are cleaning that water as it goes through, taking, you know, uh, the fertilizers out of it. You know, something to that extent, so that's something for the whole community, because it makes our life better.
I'm good with this, I'm good with it, but I would say, in the next round, look at, are there ways to allow for a point? And like you said, maybe they'll never develop the option, and they'll just do everything onsite, but if we have a really good developer who says, you know what? They should be able to get a point.
We absolutely will, and when it, because the sustainability will be carried citywide with the overall big move. So we can definitely look at expanding mechanisms and point values and things like that when it comes back.
Artificial turf, we don't wanna see.
I, I asked about that, Dale. And, right, and what we came up with was, it's not against our code.
No, we do permit it, we do permit it in here.
Should, and I asked about that on Friday.
But it says remove all.
It's up there at the top of that building across the street.
It's getting a point for it, right?
It says again, oh, I'm sorry, so removing all lawn or turf, uh, is a point and a half, so forty-eight halfway up on the vegetation. Uh, cause we know that there are, you know, uh, permeable artificial turf, we've got permeable materials that can go underneath it. Uh, wow, so at the end of the world.
No, I think, I think it's actually, you're trying to promote, I think, Dan, what, I think what should be said there is promoting earth-scaping, I think that's what you're trying to do.
We, we do promote earth-scaping, and what that section of education is saying is that we don't want large swaths of high water generated in St. Augustine, like lots, but in the water conservation qualities table itself, you get points for doing permeable pavers or things like. Astro-turf, we do not prohibit, we don't prohibit it in the current code, and we don't prohibit it in this code. There are several companies out there like Easy Turf and Heavenly Greens that do have now a permeable art, astro, or a permeable artificial turf that does have approach to it, but it, it's definitely something that we don't prohibit now, and we don't prohibit it here.
So I think, I think, I mean, look, we're gonna get super technical, I would reduce the point total, and I would say that it's reducing it in ground, drought tolerant or something like, I would, I would add some, something that, because I think with the goal, you're trying to get away from fertilizer and lawn and having to water it, right? That's the.
So we don't plow off, or say, almost seen over here, didn't do it this way?
No, we're trying to get rid of.
That's what we didn't do.
Large swaths of vegetation.
We don't want anybody doing a, a six-five-six piece of grass.
Yeah, especially vehicles.
So, for instance, Maywood Market has astro-turf in their, in their concept plant, they also have permeable pavers on tape on their margins. So they do use both of those, uh, both of those type of materials in their plant, and you guys approve.
Sixty-something, Matt? Sixty-two, did you ask?
Uh, I think they'll have something, right? No, I, I went to, uh, forty-eight, and, um, to your point, what you were trying to say is, um, in, in, is the second one is all solar panels that provides electricity to a minimum of twenty-five percent of the dwelling units, you get a point for that, and I get it. But is there something we can do where it also includes, um, common area? So do we get a, I mean, if you do a common area, do you get a half a point? You know, so you can get more points, if you're gonna do it, let's just go ahead and, you know, get the points to do the whole, um, yeah, so our forty-eight, second one down. So those, I think we're limiting ourselves when we just say dwelling units. Cause then we're saying in the common areas you have to use.
No, I think he's, I, no, I think what he's, actually, I think it's, I think it's actually better, I think, to your point, I think it's better to say it this way, cause you're actually promoting more electricity, right?
Right.
To be limited by, I think the way it's written, Dan, by saying it has to provide fifty percent of the dwelling units, that, that's.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm, uh, excuse me, I might have not been clear, but include maybe another, um, area, another section, just to say, you know, if you do it in the common area, you get another point or, uh.
So, this, this doesn't, this doesn't prohibit you putting in a common area, it's just enough.
Like the common area, do I get a point for it?
Yeah, you can put it in the common area as long as it provides enough electricity for fifty percent of those houses, or a little bit further down, it talks about common residential buildings too. So, in the new code, we also are allowing solar to go any district, we, right now, currently in the code, you have to get accessory uses, and you have to do all sorts of stuff. In the new code, we're gonna allow by right as accessory use in any district, or as a prohibited use in any district within the step back. So we're really promoting the use of, of solar power in the new code. This just says, it doesn't say you have to put it on a building, you can put it in a common area as long as it's serving enough energy to do the one percent of the household to twenty-five.
Does that percentage is where you get your point at?
Correct.
Okay.
I heard Dale on fifty-three. Well, you know what, and I know Dale might, and something to do with this, is saying this is, and, and, well, never mind, I'm good with this one. I'll let Dale say it, if he, if he thinks it's something big.
Which one are you talking about?
I was talking about the two hundred and fifty miles from the site, that you have to, uh, have recycled products manufactured in.
Oh, the lead scrap?
Um.
He didn't mean that part is recovered within two hundred and fifty miles of the site, sir. You just set him up there, Dan, he, Dale was gonna do something good on two fifty-three. You just keep him on for sale.
I'm sorry.
But it's like, let's strike him out.
This, this building we're sitting in was intended, as John Bill remember, was intended to be a lead-certified building. For whatever reason, it just didn't happen. Okay, cost him too much. Yeah, it cost too much money.
Fifty-three.
You aren't even a developer. Uh, fifty-three, uh, render or fence or wall, Dan, we touched on this earlier. How many grass plants, only, uh, sixty?
You can make that whatever you want, that's just what we promote, because that's what we generally have in our program.
So what's the, what's, we got eight feet in our residential hood like that?
You can go up to eight, you have to get a permit, you hear about, but six feet in the residential hood right now is the rate.
Wow. So, I'm misunderstanding, then, so we can go eight feet in our RS two district, but after then?
You have to get a defense.
Right.
So are you saying here, you couldn't go farther than eight feet?
You can go about sixty?
You can go the height of the step, of the, if you're, if it's a step back, you can go the height of the door.
Right, so, so Dale, then here, would you want to say a minimum of sixty?
No, I'd rather see it be a minimum of eight. If we're swinging it from protected development.
And was a lot. Yeah, I mean, what's the, what do you think, Mike? Let me figure out this thing. Eight or six feet?
Well.
The higher the better, right?
I mean, six feet, I couldn't see over.
Would you say a little thing?
I said the higher the better, if we're applying it up against, it's as specifically as says, applying it in protected development.
But some sound light, whatever.
How would we define protected development, Dan?
It's the traditional neighborhood, you're gonna.
It's on, uh, definition skills, yes.
My, my thought would be the wall, but in front of the wall, there would be vegetation and trees and stuff, it would, it would be the main barrier.
So, so I think, Dan, or, or Dale, I don't, I think that six feet may be okay, if we also incorporate the standards we were talking about, that we incorporate in there, that we have, we provide outdoor buffers, screenings, whatever, it, it's not just a wall, it's we provide, and we'll get there, when we get to that page, you're gonna drive, no, jump, Dan's gonna jump, we'll get there, but that page that talks about that transition to traditional neighborhood, we make sure the screening is covered, I think six feet is okay. Um, cause I think those eight-foot walls, sometimes they actually become, they become so tall, they're just massive wall. And people don't like it, because it's just this massive wall, where what we really wanna see is good buffers and screenings. But, and I would rather see that in a combination of both wall and vegetation.
If, Dan, the way I'm reading it, it's a six-foot wall, eight, six, whatever it is, and then ten feet of six trees and sixty shrubs per one hundred linear feet planted between the fence and the lawn line.
Correct.
So there's a ten-foot distance between.
The vegetation.
A vegetation.
That, that's, that's really the upper of the wall.
I like that better.
If you read it, that's what it's trying to say, but maybe.
So the wall would be facing residential areas, and they would look out and, and see this eight-foot, orange wall there.
So they'd see the six-foot wall, and then ten feet between there.
And then see.
Right, it's six trees and sixty shrubs per one hundred linear feet.
To me, I'd, I'd rather have.
If you remember with Great Cambridge, residents didn't want.
They didn't want.
They didn't want the tall wall, they wanted the, the lower.
You just, you just totally stole Dan's opportunity to jump up again.
With, uh, the residents of the apartment complex.
And, no, the neighbors, they didn't want ten-foot walls in their backyard.
Yeah, apartment, about eight?
Yeah.
I, I, I hear your point, though.
Yeah, it's, it's hard, it's, it's hard in Dale. Station comes and goes, fences, they have their neighbors, alright?
Fifty-four, three B, all of the fencing materials there, I can see an artistic purpose for almost all of them, and if we are going to try and encourage to have artsy buildings in our downtown and give us some character, I think we need to have an architectural standard for this.
Oh, boy, that gets tough. Well, thank you, the, the chakra with those stuff, yeah, I see your point.
Well, maybe we can put the same language we did with, with the metal, instead it has to have some sort of.
I hear you, I just don't know if you could ever make chicken wire artistic.
Wouldn't wanna see it. But I hear your point.
Razor wire has a certain symmetry to it, then.
Well, that's, that's A, I'm talking B. Only B.
And chicken wires are B's, I, I hear your point, though, like, I mean, I, I just picked it, I picked the softball out of that group to say, find me a chicken wire fence that looks good, but.
Well, what if somebody said, have a chicken shop, we wanted to have a chicken wire fence on it?
For, for our water. I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't mind if they had an architectural feature, but I think their fence shouldn't be in chicken.
And this is the perimeter fence, so.
Yes, that's the.
And this, this is the perimeter fence, so we're honoring the whole fence that separates residents from.
Said about, about round fences, they carry electrical current, you know, it's.
Well, you theoretically, you wouldn't be able to see the fence through the vegetation on one side, I think, so, um, you can see it from the residential side.
I see your point, I mean, I think, I think the distinction is, I'm all good if they wanna supplement their actual fence with these products, but their actual fence needs to be not made of those products because they're just too prone to, to issues. Like in the inside, side of it could be, could be played based with some cool artistic use of.
Sort of like sidewalk, uh, specialty, uh, yeah, pieces that still look.
But the backside of the fence would have to be just general. But I hear you. What do we have to say, do you have something on your list now, Dan? I mean, uh.
I think, uh.
What's that?
It's a little over halfway. We're, we're, I know, we're almost done, but.
Yeah, we're near the definition.
Yeah. I'm, I'm. It takes my rhythm, if you're gonna, we're actually. Yeah, and then I just, you know, the mobility services, again, scooters, uh, van, take them out. I think we should, I think we can live with, I, I would allow it in its own code and enforce it through the licensure of the, again, yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm good. Wavers, uh, fifty-four, reviewed and decided by DRC or the Planning and Zoning Commission. I did know it was a board of adjustment. Fifty-four, uh, two at the bottom, under waivers.
Procedures?
Yes, procedure, yeah, I'm sorry, waiver, yeah, purpose and then procedure underneath. This is putting, uh, again, some, uh, great deal of faith in the Community Development Director as part of the reapplication process. I'm reading that right, Dan?
Putting it bigger than the whole DRC.
More specifically, the delineated by the applicant submitted to the Community Development Director as part of the reapplication process. DRC involved in the reapplication process, no, they are not.
DRC is the final recommendation on.
So what would be, what would you like to see?
I don't know, I'm just, if this was a, this was a troubling topic to.
I think that one of the things that needs to be looked at when we talk about code and mass is, and we've talked a little bit about this, Dan, and I think maybe we can, as we go through this process, set up a, a flow chart, if you will, or things that will require different levels of approval or approval, and things that would be subject to this person's discretion, DRC, uh, Community Development Director's discretion, DRC discretion, planning and zoning discretion, or a decision. Like when, I think it would be helpful as we go through this, that when you, because it's, it's hard, I, I think I see, you know, Dale's point, what, what are we giving discretion to a specific person versus the city board? And so I think it would be helpful as you go through, when you come back and as we go through this process, maybe when we have a workshop on the code in general, have maybe some material about how you set up the approval process in general. I think that would be helpful.
So page fifty-five does have that table for the downtown. The overall code we are developing a table and have all that for.
I get it.
The rest of it for all sorts of, uh, decision making and who has the final, it, it will be done, I think it's, we're, we're drafting that map as part of the overall code.
Right, but this, the table on, on fifty-five is just that list of, I'm, I'm talking about, put together so that we can fully understand who's got the approvals of what, I think that would be helpful.
Well, and the footnote eighteen on fifty-four, what, the last sentence, or the last ten words or so, but not for the sustainable development standards. So we're setting up waiver opportunities and a process for that, but with no ability to waive sustainable development standards.
Staff does not have that ability, correct?
Well, we're putting that in your hands as Community Development Director, and so I'm, I'm wondering the contradiction there. So we've got, uh, waivers being granted by non-elected, non-appointed people, uh, and then that definition go beyond that. There's a term here, as the burden of persuasion is on the applicant seeking the waiver, uh, under additional requirements of four A. Uh, I wonder what Ms. Wilson might share with us in regards to that, uh, if she were still sitting here. Are we setting ourselves up for frustration?
No, that, that's the standard of many other areas, is the burden is on the applicant to prove their case.
Does it hang upon the word persuasion, is that the correct legal term?
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's, is that the right word, burden of persuasion?
Burden of persuasion, burden of proof, but it, it affects the amount of the same thing. The bottom line is, if you're the applicant, you have to prove your case, uh, if it is a defined term, it amounts to burden of proof, you're fine. It's, it's again, it's who's got approved to you that the evidence has been that, now, once that's done, what you call persuasion approved, and the burden shifts to whatever there may be, if there's another side, if you show some evidence on that.
So that, so for proof and persuasion are one of the same, you know?
That, that's, absent another definition, yes, it would be hard to draw a statement.
Anything else?
Anybody have any jump out issues, uh?
I, I'm happy with that.
Definitions.
I just wanna see my bracket all up in the motion, I'm curious.
What I think? I, I, I'm not ready to do that quite yet, but, um, community service facility. Where are you? Uh, fifty-eight, throw it from the top. Uh, I'm not clear on what, Dan, what that, you know, how that manifests itself. So are we talking about, uh, you know, a, uh, somebody that's, uh, feeding the homeless or, you know, uh, uh, the coalition, whatever, so what are we looking at here? Ongoing, not just for special events.
It's.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'm just trying to imagine my mind's eye what that is. And it says that it's a new definition, so, no, I'm sorry, yes, a new definition is more descriptive, it's down here below the footnote's number twenty-nine. Facilities where food, meals, commodities are served distributed for not-for-profit social services purposes. Facilities that provide temporary validation generally for not-for-profit social service purposes. So I was imagining a, you know, a, you know, a, uh, feeding, uh, folks routinely in our downtown Maywood District, feeding housing, whatever that might be. Is that possible here?
Yeah, basically, that's what our existing ordinance talks about this, what, what this one does is it expands on it, it says, any kind of community service that is there to help, whether it be a, a service to children or housing assistance type, or, or to computer-driven educational classes, things like that, that serve the community to help better the community. So this just expands on the existing definition and adds more clarity to that.
So like a new open for kids?
Correct, and, and, yes.
New open for kids?
Oh, or like what our churches do.
But, yeah, it doesn't include religious assembly or, or fraternal or civic organization, but new open is a perfect example.
Well, except it's own, it is its own nonprofit, and its own facility.
Right, it, it says that it has.
We would classify that as a community service facility.
This generally provides a service onsite and has employees at the site on a regular basis, the service is ongoing, not just for special events.
Alright, okay, alright, very good. Anybody have, uh, questions, uh, some of the other, or any of the other, uh, definitions? The other pretty short group, I've got any questions?
And, and, uh, the, uh, issue with the, the Don Reed, I mean, was, does anyone have anything as far as?
I've been, is there a legal requirement that we do that, I'm probably not gonna do it.
Not, no.
No, there's, um, as long as like. Why? There's no legal requirement that we allow any specific use of it down. Generally, as you try and build the downtown, it's a place to be, a place to live, walkability, we generally don't picture auto-go sell-in service type uses. So we wrote out of this, but it doesn't mean they have to go away, they can operate as long as they don't, they just can't expand on it. They can sell to another dealer, they can change the type of car, as long as they don't expand on it, they're allowed to stay as long as they want.
It can still be Baptist used cars.
Yeah, I'm not implying any of that.
So, my question is, um, Ms. Wilson's example was that the place burns down. What, what is actually, what would be the consideration in that, are they, are they allowed to rebuild in these same exact uses they currently have, or do they have to go through a whole new process?
Now, with any legal non-conforming use, if you burn down or you destroyed more than fifty percent, then you cannot rebuild. Then, then would no longer, they would no longer be able to use it, they no longer lose their special.
Basically, you can't insure it.
Right.
It's a problem. Now, that place might not burn as much as it might melt, but the, uh, uh, y'all, I don't need to say anymore. I was not a fan, I'm gonna be a fan, so.
Alright, great. We got slower, we have, they are there, and that's the way that.
The, uh, the negative, I mean, that side, would this potentially, if there was a deal to have them move around parcels to create, I mean, for example, move the body shop to another location, are we taking away any kind of incentive for them to do that?
I think as long as they don't expand the footprint of the building, in total, it's pretty good what they have today, as long as they don't expand it, then they'll, they'll be okay, if they, if they tear down and use and have the same square foot, they're okay, but they, they just went through a big, big renovation and.
You're not fifty percent, Dan.
Now, is that, was it the body shop that they have there, uh, did they, did they relocate any, do they have any plans to relocate that body shop onto the main campus?
Not that I'm aware of.
See, that's a, I'm, I'm, I'm just, if we're talking about that specific project, which I hate here above, I hate looking at the code and then trying to analyze it on a specific piece of property, but you would, in many ways, like to see that body shop not be sitting over there on its own island, especially when it's gonna be next to, potentially next to another project, residential project. I mean, there does, there does seem to need to make sense, um, to not bring, I mean, what this essentially does, they'll never leave it, they'll never move that, and they just got a bunch of money on that building, so it'd be hard to possibly think they're gonna walk away from that dealership, so essentially you're gonna have, you're forcing them to sit pretty much stay as it is, and I don't, don't know that that's actually a, that's fine.
Cause they could sell it and still be in business, right?
But they could never, but you could never relocate the use.
Right.
I, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, I think I don't have on this one, but.
I would imagine that, uh, parcel to the south, on the south side of, uh, Elvin, may well be parceled off to another project down there where their existing car storage and such would might be. I could easily imagine on the body shop site, that there might be a multi-level parking structure that houses those same cars that were over there, go over here.
But you can't, that's, that's the point, I think what I'm seeing, what I'm saying is, you, you essentially made any building that's there, they're not gonna touch it, unless they decide they just don't need it as part of their business anymore, or maybe they decide they don't need a body shop on site anymore, I doubt that, but you're essentially saying, I have now said every, we made every building there.
I'd, I'd rather deal with that than have that thing there three hundred years from now.
But they just did a big renovation, not one.
Unless somebody gets them enough money.
Well, it can, it can be their version of the used car lot of coin.
Alright, so let's, anybody else?
Yeah.
What about topics, I have three topics to have look at in the future, and both with regards to this, and then in total. One is the edge district, just looking at that again as far as promotion of, and we've talked about different standards, but how do those all work in concert, how does the, the setbacks, then, does that achieve the same goal? Or do we wanna necessarily look at allowing them to go closer to the line, if they also promote shrubbery, landscaping, enhancement, buffering from noise, lights, whatever, I think we should look at that as part of the process, I would look at.
Mike, do we want to take that back to P and Z?
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying over the next course of months, have P and Z look at that issue. I would have P and Z look at the sustainability standards and incorporating the potential to do city, wider city projects, not just onsite. And then I would also look at, is there a way to start to put together, maybe this isn't the right place, but a uniform, uh, look at how we get power undergrounding throughout the process. So those would be the three things I would like to have.
So a, a undergrounding plan?
Undergrounding.
Mike, are, are you, are you looking at, at having this be part of the, the overall plan that we'll see in a year? Or do you wanna do this fast track?
No, no, I think that I'd just like to see those come back and if, over the next, while this is more, I think while this is fresh in people's minds, I will look at some of these issues, and if there's any other issues to add to this list, that's what I'm saying. Toss out your issues that you want planning and zoning to look at again, if it felt like it was rushed, let's kind of put those on the table and then, uh, pass this with the tweets we talked about tonight.
Yeah, cause I don't think this stops the, the procedure, right?
I, I truly believe that all these things that you just, just delineated might be handled in sixty days, for a couple weeks, a lot of pot, even the, that, uh, so, I think they'd be okay with me twice a month for change, so, uh, they should not, should slow down additional modules, uh, so, uh, I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay, so I think.
Do you have a mind?
Does anybody else have anything else to add to that list? Lizzie, you have anything to add to that?
Well, I would remember sustainability ad hoc committee, which is subsetting in, in less than a year, Sharon, right? Uh, roughly a year.
Eighteen more months?
Oh.
No, it's zero chance, that started in November, so, uh, so.
And that wasn't a two-year?
Two-year. So, yes, maybe they're working on the same thing.
I was gonna say your mouth.
It's two.
I was saying your mouth's wrong.
Yeah, we're, we're good, you're good.
That doesn't matter.
So what else, what else?
So, uh, but, uh, sustainability group is working on that as well, that seems to be within their purview, um, it's determined by the management.
Right.
And there's still a great deal to be understood by all parties in that regard, yeah, so.
Anything else, Dan, that you think that planning and zoning should look at, more detail?
At the top of my head, I think you, you pretty much mentioned those three, so well put together.
Mike? Yeah?
Mike wants a motion.
Alright, go for it, Mike.
No, we're letting you do this one now.
Alright, so I think, do I have to go through the changes that we discussed, or do you have?
Yeah, sure.
Can I just say the motion would be to, uh, adopt proposed ordinance and with the modification that we discussed? And do I have to do more?
Yeah, well, that's fine, but let me make sure I've gathered everything, I mean, you want on page forty-four, twenty-two, that, that the word for, uh, on page thirty-seven, the metal steel, it'll take out the word walls and that except for architectural accents. And then have the, what, have three sections or three portions, P and Z look at, the undergrounding of utilities in downtown, sustainability, having other standards that are not just building specific. They're probably gonna wanna know what kind of things you're looking at, just to give them the direction to get started on. But then the third one was the edge district standards for transitioning and not necessarily. requiring a big setback if they have extra buffering.
And, and if, and if the building can then provide for some setback buffering? Because like I said, we just, I've been up here enough to have these projects come through where people say, I wish there was something buffering from those lights, I wish there was something buffering. So I think there could be, there could be some mix there that we could allow for the building to provide some of that buffering, if it was specific to use. So, something to look at, right?
Let me, let me, let me ask this, uh, so, um, as far as if somebody comes in with a development project, they're following these new guidelines immediately, and in the meantime, we're looking at maybe tinkering with this by sending some elements of this that's already been approved back to the P and Z. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I think it does, because I don't.
Is that, I just wanna know, is that kind of what, what you're?
A code could all be a work in progress, I mean, we can, we can handle it whenever we want, so.
So, but is that, did I describe that somewhat accurately, or?
Well, yeah, I think you're right, if we, if we believe that it handled that, is anybody knocking on a door?
Actually, I had a couple people contact us this last night.
I mean, we don't know when somebody's gonna knock on the door, we can't predict when somebody's gonna, they might say, God, this is, you know, construction costs are gonna go down, so who knows what they're gonna do? So, if, if, if this is passed and these are the rules they're gonna have to follow, while we all admit they're not perfect, they're a heck of a lot better than what we have now. So, if, if we're passing this, and then, this, this is on the books and they'll have to follow it, and in the meantime, um, and within a year, we'll, we'll have it, you know, everything, um, looked at, but in before that year, we might wanna temper with it to adjust things before, before the, the, the.
Right, right.
And to me, the thing that, that comes out that you talk about the most, that we might wanna adjust is the edge, that, that, that seems to be the thing we can do, put this, and, and maybe prevent harm from occurring. Undergrounding is, I thought two, two years.
All, all, yeah, I just, on that, I wanted to put it on the radar.
Right, and, and then sustainability, um, is, and I completely agree with you, I, I don't know, we can come up with something before the year, is that when the whole project to be moved out, and then incorporate it, and have, if we can come up with something before the year, then, then have, that would be fine too.
So I think what we're saying here is, we're gonna pass my motion to, my motion is to adopt proposed ordinance, amending the city code ordinance relating to the creation of downtown Maitland, and downtown Maitland plan development zoning district regulations, which, subject to these modifications. And aside to the motion, I would request that you work with P and Z, and potentially the sustainability ad hoc committee, to look at those three points. Obviously, the sustainability only look regard to the sustainability standards, because you said, you said they're already worked on.
Yeah, I, I.
And then, and then the head, yeah, the second, uh.
Okay, and then with the idea that the priority should be given to, with review to the edge district, and should planning zoning come out with a recommendation that it comes back prior to adoption?
And we can adjust this and incorporate that.
So current, yeah, so currently as it stands, they can, if they can't meet this, they can go through a PP, and ask for, or any of those, through, through the PP. So right now, they, they can still do what you're asking, they just have to go through a PP, but you wanna, you want P and Z and staff to look at ways of making it my right, like they, like they would be if they did follow it exactly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that let's look at edge date first.
And do you have a timeframe specifically, or are you?
Sixty days.
Yeah.
I, I don't, look, I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to do that personally, but I would say with reasonable expeditious efforts.
I, I wanna put a, I mean, I'd like to say, you know, with all due haste and, and with them, with current obligations and time, I would never, uh.
I would say, you know, back to where we were, I'd rather get this right and do it right, so, it may be ninety days, you know, but, I mean, we don't wanna take another, you know, four months for it, or five months, I'm gonna go ahead and kind of.
I think, I think we're, 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 we're blaming, I think, just get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, this left P and Z in February, and we're seeing it in late June, okay, so, I'd take that.
I mean, I mean.
You already have a time slot, right, to where it's gonna be?
I think I don't.
Yes.
So when do we, you say we can see it come down?
Well.
Man, I don't think we're gonna give another artificial deadline, which we just got beat up about. I mean, it's probably a good idea to let P and Z take their time, let staff take their time, and just make sure we're, we're moving it forward, but I don't think you wanna give another deadline to P and Z.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, we'll update you, you know.
We have another four hours.
Sustainability standards are part of that discussion, P and Z.
But I did, there's not a motion.
I don't second it.
Anybody understood down the various elements of the motion?
Yep.
Any, oh, we wrapped up, we already understood. We did, we did already, yeah, I'm sorry. I was sleeping. Alright, Ms. Marie, if you wanna go ahead.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Wild?
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilman Nicole Harrison?
Aye.
Mayor McDonald?
Grudgingly aye.
And?
I did.
You did a great job, that's my point, that's, it's my issue. Alright, uh, now, let's, uh, go play with the, uh, Ms. Marie, if you wanna read the, title to the downtown Maitland map amendment?
And, since the city of Maitland or Maitland nature of zoning laws, of the city of Maitland environment and zoning district boundaries, and changing the zoning map classification, are properties, those properties, accepting those zone plan developments, which are designated on a future lease of the comprehensive development plan twenty thirty five, that's Main Street, from C two, D O dash one, D O dash two, C B, R S dash D, R S dash D one, R U dash one, R S dash two, and D M C B, district to D M. Repealing all compensating or discharging, providing an sustainability call from the line for that statement.
Great.
Alright, Captain, now they got, we'll beat you one out of the way. This is the, uh, proposed downtown Maitland map, to go along with the standards that you just adopted. It basically, on the screen, there you're gonna see the Main Street future lane east designation, so what this downtown Maitland zoning district does is it basically takes that into consideration, and it, it maps the downtown Maitland district, consistent with the Main Street future lane east district. So right now, the primary zoning district is D M C D, but there's a couple other parcels, C two's a professional office and some duplex, and, and median residential lots. What this would do is we would make it all downtown Maitland, consistent with the Main Street future lane east district. Uh, what it basically does here is follows the outline of the railroad track, the reason it, it comes down the railroad track, the, these parcels here were not included because they have a future lane east designation as parks, uh, public park city property. So, the, uh, ordinance, of course, back in, in February nineteenth, DRC recommended YAM as the approval of, of the map amendment, P and Z on March fifth, voted three to two to recommend approval of the ordinance, creating that downtown district, and on June eighth, council introduced the ordinance and set tonight for the public hearing and action date. So, staff, of course, recommends council adopt the petition twenty twenty oh three, amending the zoning district boundaries, changing the zoning map in the Main Street future lane east district to downtown Maitland.
I mean, so, I, I think, I'm, I'm good with this map, with the exception of any property west of Maitland Avenue being lifted from the YAM.
Just city end of the deal?
Yes, you've heard that? You answered that before, or this? I, I, I'm good with the map, though.
Any other questions, comments, go, the cap, go to the public? Anybody from the public like to address this specific agenda item? Well, John, just come right ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to reduce the two lanes more than south to one lane.
Oh, talking of Maitland Avenue?
Yes, sir.
You're adjourned for that meeting yet?
Thank you.
It's coming now, I'll let you know.
If we can get the aging process to go through the Maitland city council, we can have activity for ten years, or even longer.
Yeah, I understand, thank you, sir. Anybody like to address this specific agenda item? Here and now, we'll bring it back to council. Anybody disagree, they think that, uh, Vice Mayor Wild had to say? Here and now, motion be in order. What are we doing with the, I'm sorry.
I'll let Mike get the language right now, second.
So, we're talking about original bond, getting that squared away?
Uh.
Wait, I don't know.
Oh, that's why I'm sorry, yeah.
What were we talking about with, uh, I'm sorry, Mike?
My is just drawing the line on the, uh, the YAM, you have a slide?
Yeah, coming down Maitland Avenue, so you're just coinciding down Maitland Avenue.
Instead of having that one appended to those.
Yes, right there on the north side of Lake Lily Village?
Yeah, I got it. I would, uh, I would draw the line on, and, so my motion would be move to adopt proposed ordinance, change the zoning map classification, moving the Main Street future lane designation, and I won't read them all off, to, uh, the YAM, and with the exception of not including the property, properties on the west side of Maitland Avenue. And directing, and directing staff to properly classify those.
Okay, very good, Maria read off all the zoning classification.
Keep them, cause you were saying, you have, you're gonna have to do something with it?
Well, it, it's, currently it is over for quarters, it would say.
So stated.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Yeah.
I second it.
We have motion, second, any other questions or comments? Here and now, Ms. Maria.
Councilman Wild?
Aye.
Councilman Russ Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilman Nicole Harrison?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor McDonald?
Aye. Okay, the city manager, you have any old business you wanna share with us?
I do not. In fact.
Eleven sort of one of the city manager. Okay, uh, need, uh, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, and Mike Wild has about to second it, and, and, uh, anybody else have, anybody from the public like to address anything on the consent agenda? I did. Yeah, uh, close the public period, bring it back to council, motion be in order. Vance is the easiest one you'll ever get.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. What did I just say?
We've heard, we got, we got two motions, I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was, uh, I was reading ahead, sorry.
It was a motion, so Mike, the motion, nice, I second it.
Yeah, never mind, I was reading ahead, you don't let me multi-pass her. Alright, so I have a motion, a second, Ms. Maria.
Councilman Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilman Nicole Harrison?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Wild?
Aye.
Mayor McDonald?
You can't get this kind of funding out of right, Joe. Ah, okay. Okay, we have decisions, uh, Ms. Maria, you wanna read the title?
We have the public period.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Anybody from the public like to address anything that's not on the agenda, so consider.
I almost skipped over.
Yeah, Bill, you always want.
There's nothing on TV, there's nothing on.
Yeah.
Uh, Bill Randolph, can you hear me? Three three one, Wyoming, Maitland, Florida, still liking Star Trek, you know, episodes where nobody had a title.
That was a good one.
I think y'all are probably aware of this issue already, but, uh, what brings me out tonight primarily is talk about, like, one of my favorite subjects, and that is the Maitland Art Center. And unfortunately, I got an email the fourteenth of the morning and ran over there to look at damage. You know, I, this, this is one of the things that has been on the top of my mind, I've been on the board for ten years, is securing this place and ma- making sure that we don't have an incident like this. And unfortunately, we had a young man that didn't make the right decisions, apparently, and popped a seven-inch tall, non-standard curb, ten inches wide, and managed to continue fifteen feet into a gay area and knocked down an art school. I can't emphasize the importance of this center, and what we've preserved here that was built eighty years ago. And it's really heartbreaking to go there every day and work on a project, you can see that across the street. And I don't know if we could have prevented it, but I did, I don't know if you're aware, but Monday morning, staff found some other chippings and pieces from a carving that's a two-story tower. And the officer came over to investigate that. I would really like to get a working group together, police, staff, art center, personnel, but we need to try and figure out how to approach this from a secure standpoint. Slowly, things are chipping away, in twenty or thirty years, we might not have an incident like this. And part of the issue that staff has told me is, we have young men that think that roof jumping is the coolest thing today. We have narrow aisle spaces over there, so it's convenient to get up and, and jump from roof to roof, but at the same time, there's a potential damaging things that are gonna be, um, restored to its original. We can recreate it, but we can never restore it. So it's imperative that we come up with a plan, a unified plan, to try and protect this, um, because again, these are fragile carvings, they look durable, but foot here, uh, can hole there, uh, we're already trying to, you know, track some things with, with the city to, you know, to shore up walls that are saggy, and there's artwork that is cracked over here, so, going forward, this, this is not just simply having contractors come in and restore something. This has to be done to preservation standards, which is a hot, lot higher than somebody would just come in and do. Anything we do over there is very sensitive and needs to be done under preservation standards. So, um, it's one of those things that if it's done now, we can't recreate it, the gates are from Italy from the mid thirties, late thirties, imported, uh, we can try to restore them, take elements off of them, but it, this is not an easy thing, and I know the city's working with the insurance and trying to work all those deals out, but, uh, I think going forward, we really need to, to meet on this and try to come up with some kind of plan. I know they're gonna have cameras going in, but cameras are reactive, they're not preventative. You know, you can text people on the camera, you can have evidence, but it doesn't prevent the damage from taking place, so, um, one of those things I really thought I would never have to come here and talk about is an actual severe damage like this.
I think he's right, you know? Anybody else like to address the council on, uh, any non-agenda items?
My name is John Butler Brook, I've been two thirty less minutes. I have to say that, uh, I never cease to be someone that's made, disillusioned, disappointed, disgusted, and depressed at what I sometimes read in the paper. The Maitland Art Center gave a lot of sweet smelling, a few gratitudes to Black Lives Matter. I hope this does not send a message from the city council or you there, that we're unaware of the racism and violence, the burning, the looting, and the stealing that is coming from Black Lives Matter. David Clark is a black sheriff, who's written a book on the origin of Black Lives Matter and where it started. I've been a recipient of Black Lives Matter, it's very personal to me. And they accused my school, you see it being racist, because I had a dress code standard. They picketed my school and threatened to burn it down, then blow it up. The police couldn't seem to find the sheriff's office of Bob Stiffing Dog, and show the town. there were no bombs in my school. They called me a racist and did not realize that ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent of my students are black, that I've established sixteen private Christian schools all the way as far north as Maryland, Cambridge, three in central Florida, and never have I ever been accused of being racist. My son is a deputy in Orange County, Medal of Battle recipient. The black sheriff of Orange County recommended that he would be the liaison with Mayor Theresa Taylor. And when he replaced her, he offered my son a stay under him. The chief judge, Melvin Perry, came to me and said, "I want you to help me in my reelection", and we did a half-hour intermission for him. I don't believe that Judge Perry would have done that if I had been a racist. Three councilmen in Eatonville came to me and said, "Our mayor's trying to bring adult entertainment into the city. Would you help us?" The mayor at that time was later removed for vote fraud, but I was able to show that he lied about Metropolitan Bureau of Investigation and General Control by giving him permission to build, uh, not all the entertainment center, but then Pastor Kimball's church. We won that lawsuit and we proved it, and there's no adult entertainment in the U.K. The people who are the originators of Black Lives Matter, who stoked the problem like that, H. Rat Brown, who encouraged during the decaying decade of the six-sixties to go into the cities and Martin Luther King tried to talk him out of it, and burn and loot and steal. I want to read you in closing, Muhammad Ali's son, Junior. On the fourth anniversary of this death, Muhammad Ali's only biological son says that his father would be against Black Lives Matter, calling the movement racist and the protesters devils. A legend, Jared Boxer, an activist, stood against racism throughout his life, but Muhammad Ali, Junior, says his dad would have been sickened by how the protesters have turned to violence and looting after the death of George Floyd. "Don't bust up, don't trash the plates," he told the Post, "you can decently protest." My father would have said, "They ain't nothing but devils." My father said, "All Lives Matter." And in our school, we taught the children that you judge a matter by the color of skin and not skin. And one of the songs we sang at our school is "Jesus loved the little children of the world, red and yellow, black and white, they are precious in his sight." Our opposition put students that didn't even live in this city to try to prove that those white students that didn't meet our dress standard were a reason for the state to close our school down. Not one of those students lived in the city. I told the Orlando Sentinel twice they didn't live in the city. Mr. Here's the attorney for the State Board of Education cleared us, and the newspaper never carried that. I'm going to wind up. But I think it would be appropriate if this board would send to the paper that they're backing this wonderful police department we have in our city, and that they're not for anybody coming in here to defund our police department as Black Lives Matter is doing in other parts of the country. God bless them, they put their life on the line day in and day out, pray for them.
Thanks, John.
They've got standing support that they deserve.
We're blessed to have a good one.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else like to address? Ms. Joan?
Uh, my name is Joan Randolph, uh, three, three, one, Wyoming Circle. I just wanted to follow up on the art, uh, piece that you wrote down earlier today, and I so appreciated being on that committee, working with the other members. And I, I don't know, I know Liz left, but, um, I don't think Jay's here, but at any rate, um, it was no small feat, a hundred and thirty-two submittals, it was unbelievable. And that when we came down to the final three, there was no one, I mean, no one came forward all the way to the top with the others below, it was very close. And I found out later that one of the artists that we did not choose was selected for Altima Springs. So, um, I hope that the council will consider continuing the art committee in some fashion because our downtown area should have an art component. And I didn't read the downtown, um, document that you guys reviewed, but surely that there should be extra points provided for people providing art in the landscape in some form or another. Any of the artists, the, the third artist that didn't get any of the work had worth, worthy of being in downtown Mayland. And so I hope that, that council will consider, um, re-erecting that committee, in fact, that was our original task, was to look for not just by four, but all of the city proper. And so I encourage you to consider that, get the committee back in there, uh, find some, how'd you say today, find some funding, but certainly this will pass and, um, to make our downtown even more vibrant. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joan. Okay, uh, public period, uh, yeah, uh, Ms. Maria, you want to jump right in with the title of our first suit?
In accordance with the specific legal plan, adding a new article to chapter twenty, Article A, section twenty-nine, section twenty-one forty, and section twenty-nine one twenty-one, establishing wellhead and well supply protection within the city, providing for non-conform use as an activity, providing for codification, severability, conflict, and ineffectiveness.
All right, Dan.
All right, Mayor, so this, this ordinance is our wellhead protection ordinance, and so what it does, it was, this quick background, it was established the Federal State Drinking Act back in nineteen eighty-six to protect the groundwater supplies. Nineteen ninety-eight EPA approved the Florida Wellhead Protection Program, and you adopted the comprehensive plan under the conservation element, said that the city's often maintained wellfield protection ordinance. So staff worked with FDP and the St. John's Water Management District to prepare this ordinance, and what it basically does is has a five-hundred-foot protection zone around city potable wells from chemical and toxic waste, excuse me, consistent with the Florida Administrative Code. And it also provides a two-hundred-foot protection zone for underground storage tanks that may contaminate drinking water. So, uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty, DRC unanimously recommended forwarding it to council with a recommendation of approval as drafted. On June fourth, P and Z did the same thing, recommended it with approval as drafted, and so staff is recommending council introduce the proposed ordinance amended chapter twenty and set a public hearing and action date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty. If that'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, Mayor? So, um, you're not allowed to spray, what, within five hundred feet?
So, basically what it does is, five hundred foot of a city potable well, it, it doesn't allow you to store hazardous chemicals and things like that.
Could you spray pesticide on Brian?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay. That's our wellfield right next to the Mayland middle track, yeah.
Questions?
And advance.
Aye. All right, anybody from the public like to address this particular agenda item? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to council, and a, uh, motion be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to introduce the proposed ordinance amended chapter twenty, water sewer and sewage disposal, Article eight, wellfield protection, set, it's a public hearing and action date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty.
I'm so proud. Isn't that great? Looking for a second?
Second.
And a motion, and a second, we're good. Further, uh, comments are allowed. Uh, Ms. Maria, if you would, uh, please call the caller roll.
Councilman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie.
Aye.
Mayor Donald.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Maria, you're on a roll.
In accordance with the city of Mayland, Florida amending chapter twenty-one dash and RS four, single-family residential district of the co-boarding system, driving the whole business hours of operations in the RS four, single-family residential district, providing for codification, logic, and conflict, providing for ineffectiveness.
All right, thank you. Dan?
So Mayor, this, council, this is back in January of this year, you get, council directed staff to draft an ordinance for consideration on the RS four zoning district, specifically the hours of operation. So the hours of operation currently limit businesses and offices along Mayland Avenue between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. This was established back in nineteen eighty-three when there was a lot of residences there. So it's applicable to businesses and professional offices with, with frontage on Mayland Avenue only. So what's proposed in the ordinance is we take up, instead of seven AM to seven PM, it would go from seven AM to eleven PM Sunday through Thursday, twelve AM Friday, and Saturday, consistent with the noise ordinance. P and Z on February twentieth, uh, unanimously recommended it forward to council, it's drafted. DRC, March eighteenth, same thing, as, as drafted. So staff's recommending council introduce the proposed ordinance amended that section and set the public hearing and action date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Anybody from the public like to address this specific agenda item? Hearing none, Stacy, you don't want to talk about this, do you?
No, good, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, hearing none, we'll, uh, bring it back to council, any questions? Uh, motion to, uh, set the proposed date be in order? And motion to reduce the proposed ordinance, set date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
And motion, a second, Ms. Maria?
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Mayor Donald.
Aye.
Okay, while we're getting to going, uh, Maria, take a breath, and, uh, you might want to read the next item.
I'll let you glass it pour, yeah?
Take a moment, it's okay.
In accordance with the city of Mayland, Florida amending city code chapter five, Article four, signs, amending the regulations of the signs in place of a certain sign during election periods, providing for codification, conflict, and ineffectiveness.
Okay, Dan?
All right, so council, this is, um, an ordinance is drafted to look at the aesthetic quality of Mayland. Uh, this was, it's also based on the two thousand fifteen Reed versus Gilbert Arizona Supreme Court ruling that talked about how you can regulate signage. Uh, so during that, the city initiated a review of existing sign code language regarding certain signs during the election periods, and so what the Reed versus Gilbert Arizona decision says basically, don't even regulate the size, height, number, and timeframe, and they prohibit certain types of signs, but they can't regulate the content. So what this ordinance does is it deletes the whole definition of election sign because that's regulating the content, and what it does is it allows, currently the ordinance says that you have to remove the election sign seven days after the election, but it didn't say when you put them up. Proposed ordinance allows it sixty days prior to the election and onward to seven days after. The current ordinance allows one sign per candidate, per issue, so depending on how many issues there are on the ballot or how many candidates, you can have that many signs in your house. The proposed ordinance limits it to three signs, uh, they're freedom of expression signs. And again, the current ordinance is six square feet residential for a sign up to four feet in height. It de, it, the current ordinance allows non-residential properties to have thirty-two square feet with, uh, twelve feet in height. So what the proposed ordinance does is just, it combines it back to the residential size, so all signs shall be six feet, six square feet, and four feet in height. So similar to the, the existing ordinance, proposed ordinance, they cannot be placed in the right way. And May twentieth, DRC recommended unanimously to forward council with a recommendation of approval, and June fourth, P and Z recommended unanimously forward council with a recommendation of approval, they wanted to add the modification to their, the recommendation to measure the height, the height of the sign at the grade of, of the property where it's at. Uh, so this modification is reflected in the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you tonight, so staff recommends council introduce the proposed ordinance amended chapter five and set the public hearing and action date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Happy to answer any questions?
All right, anybody from the public like to address this specific agenda item? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Uh, I'm not a fan of the four-foot height, uh, but, uh, we need set the date, get to it later.
Dan, what, um, you know, we talked earlier and I said, you know, three signs, I mean, if you had a corner lot, you could really have six freedom signs out there. I don't know if that's like Freedom Prize. But what, what's the code right now? How many signs of different, are you allowed to have, or is it pretty much set for just the, the, the number of signs? Are you just, as it reads right now, are we allowed one on each, uh, corner?
And the way, the way the current sign code reads is basically one per issue per, and per candidate. So if you have a presidential election, a state races, you have local races, you have ballot initiatives, you could have that many signs per street range. So right now...
So I could have five signs right now if I wanted out on each side, so I could have a ten signs?
You could have, yeah, depending on how many, if, if you do a charter amendment, there's twenty-nine amendments to that charter, you can have twenty-nine signs plus your council members, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that for every street range, this one just limits it to three freedom of expression.
So I could do, if I was on a corner, I could only do six signs with this?
If, if you have two street ranges, you can do it for street range, so if you have four, four ranges, you do it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we love you, but I spoke about the thirty-two square foot guy. The, uh, but, the, the other guy. But I practiced it nicely.
You did. Say the motion, introduce the proposed ordinance, set date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
And second, Ms. Maria?
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Donald.
Aye.
Boy, some good stuff. Uh, okay, Ms. Maria, I pay you extra.
In accordance with the city of Mayland, Florida amending your split zone map of the city of Mayland, dividing your zoning district boundaries and changing the zoning map classification of the western portion of the city-owned property of civilian parking north from deep downtown Mayland zoning district to RS two, appealing all conflicting ordinance and providing severability clause providing for ineffectiveness.
Okay, uh, Dan?
This is my last one, I promise, I'll sit down.
You're getting good at it.
So this property is, is currently a split zone property, it's half B and ZD, half RS two, is the last remaining B and ZD property in, in the city after tonight's map adoption. So it is, the future land use is traditional neighborhood, and it's currently a retention on, owned by the city. So what it would effectively do is take this property here, this is the split zone property, and it would match it on to make it all RS two. Now ultimately, with the zoning, the twenty-twenty-one plan that's gonna come in, this will, is slated to go to the government arts and public districts, this is a city-owned property as a stormwater pond. So again, just another look at what the property is, it's the city stormwater pond at upper. On May twentieth, DRC recommended unanimously to, to forward to council with a recommendation of approval, finding it consistent with the twenty-thirty-five CEP, it meets all criteria outlined in section seven point five, one through three of the code. P and Z on June fourth came to the same conclusion, ordered it to council with a recommendation of approval, finding it consistent with the comp plan and all satisfactory provisions and arrangements that may concerning the factors I advise for DRC's review in that section seven point five. So staff is recommending council introduce the proposed ordinance amended the zoning map and set the public hearing and action date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty. That'll be happy to answer any questions.
I would dare, anybody have any questions from the public regarding this specific agenda item? Hearing none, bring it back to council, anybody have any questions to the voters for this? If they believe so, so motion be in order.
I'd like to make a motion, introduce the proposed ordinance amended the zoning map petition number twenty-twenty dash oh-four on the Wednesday, and set the public hearing and action date for July thirteenth, twenty twenty.
All right, very good. Uh, we have a motion, we got a second already? Or, uh, miss that?
Second.
Chairman's ready to say. Uh, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Any further comment? Ms. Maria.
Councilman Decker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Mayor McDonald.
Aye. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Dan.
There's a lot of work out there, Dan. Now you can go read. Ms. Maria, you want to introduce the item?
Merci. Lee Paul Harrison committed her resignation on the week, elected on a post to council seat number four, but the crowd detected she was an opponent. Her term expires on the eve of the thirtieth. The term of leave of service of owner also expires on the eve of the thirtieth, and she is eligible and wishes to be considered for reappointment. The first choice is Sarah Hartnett, out of the C word, the leave of service of the Nova Tower. Third choice is Lee Paul, Glenn Jaffe, Lawrence Vaughn, and Isaac Smith. Council was requested to make two appointments to the crowd that said that he was an opponent of the thirtieth, be towards the return.
All right, very good. Got a chance to speak to these ladies that had indicated this would be their first choice, and I think we probably ought to consider reappointing Ms. Harris over with the first nomination, and that you can consider that a nomination.
Second.
Third.
Look at you, John.
He's still right on my nerves.
Lindsey did you have a prayer. Also, I spoke to Ms. Gatlin, Jan, and Ms. Seward, and I'm a big Ms. Seward fan. You'd consider that a nomination as well.
Sounds like the reason for it, maybe.
Yeah. It was second.
I did.
You take, pick one out for me.
Yeah, I had the chance to talk to her on the phone also. She, she reached out, emailed, and she did a good job, really showing that she wanted to be part of it.
All right, very good.
I heard she wanted to put Florida State Seminole statue there.
Okay, I like the group.
I think it's time for reconsider.
I wish I knew. No, anyway. Mr. Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, Chair and Council, you guys have anything that you want to report?
Other than this reminder Friday?
Yeah, when we get to that in a second. All right. But you can go ahead.
Councilman Decker.
Reminder, not that, we had our version of a protest on Saturday. We all survived. It was peaceful and three minutes and forty-nine seconds, forty-six seconds, what it was. Is that right, Louis? All right. Reminder on Friday at nine o'clock, and I'll be here earlier drinking coffee, so you're all in trouble. So at, so let's get started, get after it with our strategic planning. We're about a month and a half behind where we might otherwise only be. Any, oh, census, please, anybody that has not gone online with something, even I will take it, do it in a matter of seconds. It's too easy. We need it, it matters, it's getting done. Anything else we need? Thank you very much, we're headed home. Thank you, we're done.